Good evening. We welcome you to this Provo Municipal Council meeting. It's Tuesday, April 22 at 5:30 PM. We'll begin with a roll call, starting with Counselor Hanley.
George Hanley.
Travis Hoben.
Becky Bogdan.
Craig Christiansen.
Gary Garrett.
Rachel Whipple.
Catrice McKay.
Thank you, and we welcome the mayor as well to our council meeting tonight. We'll begin with an opening prayer which will be offered by Rachel Breen, and then the pledge of allegiance will be provided by Counselor Christiansen.
Our dear homey father, so very thankful that we live in this beautiful city, and please bless us that as we are at this meeting that we may be able to think of the best ways to serve the citizens of Provo and that we may be able to have divine guidance in our decisions when we say these things in Jesus Christ.
Amen. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have a special employee recognition for Provost Edidas will be presented by Mayor Cafusi and our library director Carla Gordon.
Chair Garrett, Vice Chair Whipple, I'm pleased to be on this side. You're mixing it up tonight. It is a privilege to stand before you today and recognize an exceptional employee whose dedication, professionalism, and service have made a meaningful and lasting impact on our community. While one Provo is built on the strength of collaboration and teamwork, it is also important to highlight the remarkable contributions the individuals make in their roles each day. So this evening, I am pleased to invite our library director Carla Gordon to present the April 2025 Employee of the Month Award to an outstanding member of our Provo library team.
Should I tell her to come up and stand next to you? Okay, excellent. We would like to make this award to Caroline McFarland, who is one of our children's librarians. There's a lot of things that I love about Caroline, but one thing is is that she is a homegrown librarian. She grew up here in Provo and came to the library often as a child. She was a frequent participant in the very same programs that she is in charge of today, which I think is just so much fun. She knows the community and she works so hard for each of those kids, so. I should have brought.
Do you want to?
No. I think I can do it. Caroline is an amazing children's librarian who cares deeply about connecting the right book to each library patron. Caroline's attention to detail helps the library as she buys all the children's fiction collection and the children's comic collection. If there is a book list for kids that the library has created, chances are that Caroline has either created it or edited it. Caroline helps manage the children's the children's webpages on our website and starred in our social media content promoting children's literacy tips with puppets. She's really good with puppets. Caroline supervises our English storytellers overseeing about fourteen storytimes each week, averaging two hundred attendees each day. Caroline also is one of the librarians who presents the hands-on storytime, which is designed especially for young kids who are overstimulated by large crowds. As a bonus, Caroline is incredibly creative. If you've ever attended the fairy tea program, chances are you've been dazzled by Caroline's decorations. Caroline works tirelessly to make sure that anything she is involved in at the Provo library is up to her extremely high standards. The children's department, along with the rest of the library, is grateful to have such an astounding outstanding employee as Caroline to help make the library an inspiration to library patrons, young and old. She's amazing.
I just want to add, she's so cute. She doesn't know they're my grandkids, but they come in full costume to the library. We get Batman, we get Iron Man, we get and my daughter takes pictures and Caroline's always smiling in the background and all my grandkids are the wild ones that are like, you know, thinking they know how to run the library. They're going behind the counter, but in full costume, never not gone in full costume. So thank you for what you do. And let's, City Council, come down and let's grab a photo.
We now have the public comment period of our meeting. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following the presentation. At this time, up to fifteen minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda, but are limited to topics regarding municipal business or within municipal council purview. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium. Those participating in the meeting via Zoom can raise, use the raised hand feature to indicate they wish to comment. So if you'd like to make a public comment, you can come forward at this time. Just begin by stating your name and city of residence. Jennifer, can you help with the microphone there?
Hello?
Yeah, just pull down the one here that's on the podium. Just pull it, just, it can bend all the way down and all the way down and over. There you go.
Well, once again, this is proof that we need an ADA coordinator. This is not even accessible, by the way, legally. I am back and I'm not going to stop coming back until somebody does something. I don't care what it takes. But the City Council, I always thought was a body of action, not passing the buck. And by the way, when it comes to passing the buck, one of the responses I got via email, and by the way, I don't have email, comes from a friend. Basically, they were passing the buck, saying all these issues I'm bringing up, a lot of them are federal government. Well, you know what? It's a federal law, but there are so many areas of law in this country where local institutions and municipalities and states have to follow federal law. And the federal government, I assume by this last election, everybody wants a smaller government. Don't expect the federal government to do all the work that you're supposed to be doing. Now, what happened just a few weeks ago, there's a pile of dirt blocking sidewalk on University Avenue. It took more than a week before somebody at the city finally got the message and got it removed. This is a prime example of why we need a liaison. We need somebody who knows the law and will have a way of fixing it and not just go through whatever we have to go through. And by the way, the part-time person over the ADA in the legal office, don't they have enough to do? Really? And they don't have enough time to study all the issues. But we need somebody and we need somebody now. And all the things that have been emailed to you by my friend and the things I've mentioned, once again, it's just the tip of the iceberg. There is so much we have to do, so far to go. And why we are not taking action, I don't know, but I'm really disappointed that people in Provo City decided to pass the buck. That's not getting anything done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. And I'll make sure, I believe you you called into Rachel Breen. I'll make sure she has the, is able to get you the contact information for Tara Riddle, who has been appointed to help us liaison for ADA issues. And I know Rachel was helpful at getting the issue addressed on Freedom Boulevard by the Power Department, so we'll continue working with you on those. Thank you very much. Other public comment?
Yes, my name is Eric Ellsworth. I'd lived here in Provo for the last eight years and love it. One question, I'd live on just over an acre of property and my water bills have continued to go up. I don't understand that my land is agriculturally zoned and the water is prices of I can't water my property anymore and it's going to just turn into weeds. And I just don't understand why some of the properties is is different, that a family, a single family pays one amount. Commercial property pays another amount and I don't understand why there isn't some kind of a break for the agricultural properties. Taxes have gone up so high on the agricultural properties, my next door neighbors just had to sell their properties because their taxes were twenty thousand dollars a year. And they were retired, eighty years old, and have put down all their horses now. And we're losing, we're losing that open area and I don't want to see it go. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. If any others have come to address water issues, we do have that on our agenda as the final item. It's not till the end of the meetings. If you need to leave early, feel free to take advantage of this open public comment period, but we do have that on the agenda to discuss tonight. Any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Naomi Flinders and I grew up in Utah. I live in Provo. I am coming to this meeting because it's very important to me that we have an RFP put into the budget this year for a study on Center Street. I think that anything that happens on Center Street has to be a communal decision and you're going to need public input and you're going to need a lot of people putting a lot of thought into it and what to do, and we can't do any of that until you give us an RFP in the budget. So my dad, who can't be here, I've been talking to him about it. He wanted to say that it would be if we made some changes to the Center Street downtown, it would be an attractive and appealing reception area for Provo event, Provo events. Lots of people come in for in for the convention center, covey arts, BYU games and performances, et cetera, and it would be an upgrade for the Olympics. I think that our downtown has so much potential, it could be so cute. An article by Civic Well on the economic benefits of a walkable city, it says that tourists coming to Vermont to walk and bicycle in the scenic human scale towns and compact pedestrian friendly town centers have proved to be an economic boon. It's estimated that thirty-two thousand visiting cyclists spent thirty-one, thirteen point one million in Vermont, about twice the amount of money generated in Vermont's maple syrup producers in a good year. So there's no reason like this, that this couldn't become something like that, like what kind of town do you come off the freeway and there's this beautiful view? So I want an RFP that would include short-term changes on Center Street and also long-term changes. There are a lot of changes that could happen down there that wouldn't take any.
Great. Thank you very much, Naomi. Thank you for your interest in Center Street. Any other public comment? If not, we'll close public comment and turn to the next agenda item, which is a result, an implied motion on a resolution approving an agreement between Provo City and Xerxes Society for invertebrate conservation to make Provo a member of Bee City USA. This will be presented by one of our council interns, David Pyle.
Evening, Council. You may remember Counselor Whipple's presentation a few work meetings ago about making the Provo a member of Bee City. We have been working ever since to move this process forward. We've gotten support from Parks and Rec. We've gotten support from the Citizens Sustainability Committee. Most of the requirements of this initiative are already being done by Parks and Rec. And so one of the final pieces is to pass this resolution that's in front of you. And we're required to pass this as part of our membership to express the city's support and commitment to the membership of this program. I just want to take a minute to address one concern that's been frequently brought up, which is the use of city funds to pay for the annual membership fee. Counselor Whipple and I have an upcoming meeting with the Provo Foundation in which we will discuss the setting up of a donation portal to fund these, this initiative through public donations and mitigate their impact on the city budget. And I don't really have much else to say, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
David, what is that annual fee?
Five hundred dollars annually.
Okay, great. Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Bogdan?
I have a couple that were sent to me today. So what happens if, no, let's say no one from the outside of the city pays for the fee, then what happens? Do we just not have that accommodation that year? I mean, are we just completely not a bee city or?
Well, based on our conversations with the public, we've secured at least a couple of years' worth of funding in the event that that run out. I can't say exactly what would happen. That would be up to the council. Because there's no formal contract being signed, the council can decide to simply end the agreement and no longer be a member of Bee City. Or the council can choose to fund that in some other way.
And then what other fees or costs are associated with this besides the yearly fee? Like, are there sign costs or are there, what kinds of costs are there?
Yes, so the city will be required to create one sign showing Bee City support in a prominent public location. So there's the cost of that sign. Aside from that, as far as administrative expenses and that sort of thing, like I said, most of these things are being done by Parks and Rec already, so I can't, I can't give you any hard numbers. But the impact would likely be very minimal.
And the sign would be paid for by Parks and Rec or?
I believe so, yes.
Or by the the funds that come in for donations?
Based on our conversations with Doug and Parks and Rec, I believe that that would be paid for using the Parks and Rec budget.
Thanks.
Other questions? David, maybe you could just outline some of the requirements for the public, what is required of the city for Provo being listed as a member of the of the Bee City?
Yes.
Getting that designation.
The goal of this program is to create a habitat that is conducive to pollinators. It focuses specifically on bees, but it also benefits other pollinators in our area, hummingbirds, some species of bats, beetles, that sort of thing. And so by using our public lands to create friendly areas for those bees, we're creating an environment in which they can thrive. So Parks and Rec would be required to create a list of recommended plant, pollinator-friendly plants to be used in new plantings in public areas. They would be required to create an integrated pest management plan, which I'm told that they would, that they already have, which would involve such things as using pesticides that are deemed friendly to pollinators. Just modifying our landscaping and cultivating practices to create an environment that's healthy for these pollinators.
Great. Thank you, David. Any other questions for David? Yes, Counselor Whipple.
Yeah, one of the the questions that Counselor Bogdan had raised for, which was a concern was like, well, if we do this, then people will just let their lawns go and not mow them, then it will be dandelion city. But is is it correct that kind of creating these friendly plant lists and doing the little education would be a positive way that the city could kind of push back against that misperception?
Yes, so this is not an advocacy for wild untamed grasslands. The city can continue to mow its lawn and trim its bushes like you, like it always has. It's just that the new flowers that we're putting in, the pesticides that we're using will be friendly to these pollinators. So as a resident who's visiting a park in a public area, your experience would likely not be affected by this.
Yeah, well, and the education component is, I believe that the the parks will do some, but also this is Citizen Sustainability Committee, when they do outreach, will they be providing some information to the public too about how they can do this well?
We haven't had that conversation up to this point. The, per our last conversation with Parks and Rec, the plan was to create a booth in the farmer's market in which this kind of information would be distributed.
Oh, very fun. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you. This item is available for public comment. If there are any who would like to make any comment or statement about this issue at this time, please approach the podium.
Hello, my name's Sharon Emmett and I live in Provo and I had the opportunity to go back and watch work session. I know I've texted several of you about this. I wasn't excited, mostly because of the funding. And I appreciate Counselor Bogdan's comment about who even gets to pay for the sign, because these are because these are additional costs to our city, especially on the day, the same day that we're talking about raising water rates for everybody in the city. So my largest comment would be, and I'm sorry you can't find it, but in your packet, I saw a page that says fiscal note or something like that, says five hundred dollars still, even though in all of your meetings you've referenced that there will be a donation to cover this. So I wondered if there's some way, and I don't know if this is for Mr. Jones or for the council, to add or amend the resolution to state that we, we welcome this, we want to be a part of this, as long as it is, the fee is, the annual fee is covered by Provo Foundation or some other private donation, so that there is no fiscal note for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Other public comment? If not, we'll close. Yes.
I'll make a public comment because I took the day off work, so I might as well make my money worth it. I think this is a great idea. I don't mind if it comes out of the city budget. Five hundred dollars is not very much money. And if we don't have pollinators and we don't have bees, we don't have food, we don't have air. So it seems like a really top priority to me. And I am grateful that somebody is putting in the work to make all of the education happen and make all of the planning happen for it. And you could put native plants down on Center Street if we read that. That's my comment.
Naomi, can you state your name and city for the record again?
Naomi Flinders from Provo, Utah.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item back to council for discussion. Any discussion among council members? Counselor Bogdan?
Brian? Do you have an answer to Sharon's question?
Yeah, I mean, you can, well, it might be more of a question for David in the sense that you can do whatever you want. The question, I guess, I suppose whether B-City will accept it or not. Now, having said that, the agreement that we're approving is a year to year agreement. So any year that we don't have the money to pay the fee, it just ends.
Okay.
So there's, there's no ongoing obligation to pay every year. It's a matter of every year you decide whether you meet the requirements and they decide whether the certification continues or not. So it, it'd be a budget. So e- even without changing anything, it'll be a budget issue every year of whether that five hundred dollars is in the budget or not. And if it's not, and there's no other available funds to pay for it, then the agreement will end.
We just don't submit the application and they just don't accept. Now, we do have the Conservation and Resiliency Plan to include that. Is that going to hamper that at all? Because now it's part of like a general plan?
Well, the general plan is one of the requirements. The General Plan Amendment is one of the requirements that, for the certification. But the General Plan Amendment, to my recollection, doesn't talk about membership. It talks about the kinds of policies that foster pollinators. So having that in the general plan, I don't think is going to make any difference to.
Membership.
To membership.
Right, thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Counselor McKay?
Thanks, Gary. I love bees. I love buying local honey and eating local honey. My issue with this is kind of like Sharon and Becky in the sense that I don't know that this is going to translate into more bees in our city. Of course, our awesome Parks and Rec is already doing a lot of these things, which is no surprise. And, you know, our conservancy and resiliency, our sustainability committee does great things and already does lots of education and such. I guess I have an issue with us paying money to someone who tells us what to do. I just don't like that. I don't like when the state does it to us. You know, we avoid that at all costs, the state coming down and telling us what to do, right? And now we're paying someone to tell us what to do. And there are a number of, we have to do education and website stuff and signs and all that costs money. It costs money of our employees, their time. And so I just want to explain why I will be voting no, but I hope it translates into a lot more bees.
Thank you, Counselor McKay. Counselor Christensen?
Well, I, I think we've actually spent far more than five hundred dollars in the first work meeting. This is such a worthwhile thing. We stop, when we stop thinking in terms of ecosystem, we start living in silos that are very unproductive as a society and as an environment. I'm delighted that Provo City is already doing these things. So I don't see it as someone is telling us what to do. I see it as someone is helping us make good choices. So I'm, I'm very supportive of this. I'm, I'm happy to contribute to this as an individual. And I think the idea of us, this being a stumbling block at five hundred dollars, again, we, we blew through that so, so long ago. I would like to see us educate and encourage the, the interdependence we have with all of our environment. And this is such a small thing. And I think a good and worthy thing. So I, I would encourage us to, to pass this.
Thank you, Counselor Christensen. Any other public comment? Counselor Whipple?
Yeah, to address Counselor Bogdan's concern, if you look at the Resolution, Section Three, four F on renewal, one of the city's obligations is that each February, following the first calendar year participation, the city would apply for renewal by submitting the required report and paying the renewal fee. So if we are coming up on February and we don't have the funds, then we don't do it and the contract is, is ended then. So there is a date certain set for us to know if we want to continue to participate. And that's, that's good. That means that we can always review. And as well as Xerxes, they can, can decide whether or not our city is, is sticking up to the commitments that we make with this. I, I just really love the idea that this is a way that we can highlight good work that our Parks and Rec Department is already doing. That we can be a good and healthy example for the members of our community, that we can give them ideas and good resources instead of simply being punitive, like with our zoning enforcement on like badly done zero escaping or something like this. Like here we're offering people ideas and solutions. And certainly as a city, we pay to be part of many different professional organizations. And the fees that we pay for those affiliations are much more than this five hundred dollars for a year. And they're not nearly as happy as this one. So as a somebody who's raised children here, who's dead gardening, who loves our parks, this is the kind of thing that I would have enjoyed as a young mom, like going through the parks and talking with my kids about things. We don't have right now, like a, a, a children's museum or children's gardens. We have these parks and where we've got the informational and historical things. Like my family has always eaten those up. Like these are community resources. And this to me is another way that we can do that. So I, I am really excited about it. But the happiest thing for me was when I came back and brought this information to Hannah Salzle and to our parks to find out about it, was to learn that our city was already doing these things. I didn't know that our city was such good steward of the, the land that we've been entrusted with. That was a revelation to me. And I want to share that knowledge with the rest of our city. And this is, I, I just think like the happiest way that we can do that. And I have personally committed to, to doing funds because if five hundred dollars was the only thing that was stopping us, I can overcome that burden for us. And it's been encouraging to hear how many people like Counselor Christensen are like, oh, absolutely, I'm going to get on board and help with that too. The fact that we have an opportunity to engage the, our private citizens in this gives them more of a sense of ownership and doing a little public private partnership, even in this small way on five hundred dollars, is another lovely way for people to kind of take ownership and responsibility for the city and feel proud of what we can offer.
Thank you, Counselor Whipple. I feel supportive of the agreement also. But do agree that, that funds should come through the Provo Foundation. Just to make sure that residents aren't confused about where budget priorities are, even though it's not a very expensive cost. I'll call for a vote then on this implied motion. Counselor Bogdan?
No.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Hanley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
No.
And Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
This motion passes by a vote of five to two. Next, we have an ordinance amending the Conservation and Resiliency Plan to include a new appendix committing Provo to be a B-City USA affiliate, presented by one of our planners, Hannah Salz.
Hello, this follows very closely on item one, so I don't feel like I need to give it much introduction. This is simply the ordinance amending our Conservation Resiliency Plan to meet the requirement of having a statement committing us to be a B-City and outlining our ethos around it as part of our general plan. Technically, the Conservation Resiliency Plan is an amendment to the general plans. This is an amendment to amendment. It's still under the umbrella. It counts. We just felt like this would be an easier place to find it and a place where it fit a little bit better. You can see it's very brief, seventy-ish lines or, sorry, about twenty-ish lines. Outlining our major points of commitment, but also, as I said, our, our explanation of our vision of our role of stewardship and how support for our pollinators plays a role in supporting the health of our broader ecosystem and everyone who lives in it, including us. Any questions?
Hannah, you, I believe you're one of the city liaisons to the Citizens Sustainability Committee?
Correct.
What I read as well had some role or function that they were playing. And yet it seems it may have shifted to Parks and Rec. Do you understand representing the Sustainability Committee that they would play any role in this, in managing the process?
Yes, the, one of the other requirements is that the Parks and Recreation Department or whoever is the responsible entity for enacting the Landscape Management Plan has to give some sort of annual report on their efforts. And the Citizens Sustainability Committee will be the body that receives that annual report. And they already published an annual report of their activities, so we're happy to add it to our published online reports there.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions for Hannah? Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you.
Are there any who would like to make a comment, make public comment related to this issue? If not, we'll close public comment and bring this item back to council for discussion. Any discussion or questions? Yes, Counselor Bogdan?
This was brought to me by a resident as well. If there was a possibility for the neighborhood program to maybe provide the sign and see if there is a neighborhood that is willing to provide the sign instead of a Parks and Rec budget in a prominent place. I'll throw that out there.
So to provide a payment for the sign through the neighborhood program?
Yeah, see if there's a neighborhood that would want to use their matching grant funds for. I believe that's the comment that was made to me. So I'll bring that forward.
Okay, yeah, that, that would certainly be something the district program could discuss. A good matching grant opportunity.
We just have to display one sign in a prominent location.
Yeah.
There could be multiple signs in different locations, different parks.
Sure.
Yeah.
Any other comments or question? Counselor Whipple?
So Becky, are, are you asking like if different neighborhoods want to add more signs, that they would pay for additional ones so that they could have this in their neighborhoods too?
I think the comment was just to see if they would be willing, if someone was willing to pay for the sign versus Parks and Rec. And then if they weren't, then go the other way. But, you know, you might have a downtown neighborhood that's like, yeah, we don't have any real project to do, let's do that. Or West Side neighborhood, this is, yeah, let's do that. So, I mean, I don't know that you would limit it to just one neighborhood if you had five proposals to do it, right? But that was just brought to me that in lieu of using public funds for the signs, that maybe it would be great to pitch it to the neighborhoods first.
Yeah. Do, Hannah, do you have any sense of how much one of these informational signs would cost?
No, it depends on the design, the construction, the size, what else we want to put on it. All the sign has to say is that we are a member of the B-City USA program from the Xerxes Society for Invertebrate Conservation. Any other educational elements, materials will dramatically affect the cost. We haven't had that discussion exactly yet with parks. We wanted to make sure we got past this hurdle before we spent more time projecting on signs. But this is definitely an element that we can work in now that we're going to start having those conversations.
So it could be as simple as like the, the bicycle signs that we've got saying that we're, are we silver level right now or?
Yeah, going for gold at least.
Right. So those are pretty straightforward little signs. So something as small as that could satisfy this requirement. But we could also use this as an opportunity to do more education. That would cost more. Okay. That makes sense to me. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Christensen?
I'm, I too am very sensitive about budget. I'm also very sensitive about spending so much time micromanaging something like a sign that we're missing. It's like we're missing the funny part. So I, I, I acknowledge, yes, there is a cost to it and I think we can be spending our time and not delegating to other people to have more meetings and other committees. And honestly, I, I just think it's, let's, let's get this done and let's start working on significant issues. I, again, I appreciate that any cost is a cost. But when we assign it to have other people do something and hold me, those, they're costly or two. Let's save those costs.
Thank you. Any other comment? If not, I'll call for a vote. Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Hanley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Thank you. This item passes by a vote of seven zero. Next, we have a public hearing regarding the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan and Year One Annual Action Plan Draft. This will be presented by the Redevelopment Director, Melissa McNally.
Thank you. I would just like to open a public comment period that will begin today and will last until June third. And in doing so, have a public hearing. This is for the Consolidated Plan, which is a five-year plan that dictates, well, prioritizes our funding, our funding for the HUD grants that we receive from CDBG and Home. And in addition to the consolidated plan, there is an annual action plan. With that, those are both available on the Provo website. If you go to provo.org, it's under Community Programs. And there is a place where you can comment. If you want to go on the website, you can comment tonight or at the next public hearing we'll have on this on June third. Or email me. There's several ways that you can, you can provide comment, which we encourage. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions for Melissa? If not, we'll go ahead then and open this. So is this a public hearing, Brian, as opposed to public comment? We'll open this public hearing in response to the 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan and Action Plan Draft for the Redevelopment Agency. Any who would like to comment during this public hearing can step to the podium at this time. If not, we'll close public comment. And again, as Melissa said, invite you to go to the city's website where you can find a link and allow you to provide comment there regarding the great work that she and city volunteers have done to allocate these important resources to redevelopment projects in our city. And the next, the second and final public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June, June third. We'll now bring this item back to the council for discussion. Is there any discussion? Okay, then. Okay, then we'll look for a vote on this.
No vote.
I'm sorry, there's no vote. Thank you. Next, we have an implied motion on the ordinance repealing outdated references to the Utah Alcoholic Beverage Control Act, presented by Deputy City Attorney Bob Trumbly, in this case by our City Attorney Brian Jones.
I gave Brian the night off, told him I'd take care of this since he'd already handled it at work session. So this is really just a simple code cleanup. It used to be that the State Alcoholic Beverage Control Act required that local municipalities adopt part of it by reference. That's long since changed. It applies to throughout the state and to the cities in its modified form without local action. This is just repealing a chapter of the code that has references to the state code that don't even exist anymore and that aren't necessary. So we're just suggesting that you take it out, so it's gone.
Great, thank you, Brian. Any questions for Mr. Jones? Thank you, Brian. Are there any here who would like to offer public comment related to this item? Seeing we'll close public comment and bring the item to the council for discussion. If there's no discussion, we'll go ahead and call for a vote. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
And Counselor Garrett, yes. That implied motion passes by a vote of seven to zero. Next, we have an implied motion on an ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding fees and fines associated with code enforcement and declaring failure to correct grading violations a nuisance. This will be presented by our zoning administrator, Scott Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, council. So really quick, Title VII is our administrative enforcement program title of code. We're not adding anything new to this. We're just making some updates. There are some things in here that are tools that our code enforcement have not utilized in many, many years that we're starting to implement now. And with our implementation of these tools, we're finding things that could use a little updating. So what this proposal does is change some verbiage throughout the title from fees to fines. It's a very nuanced fix to the code where, for some reason in the past, it's been noted as fees where in actuality, these are fines. Where the proposal also increases and standardizes what those daily fines will be. We'll see that in the next couple slides. We define what a subsequent offense would be. In, in the current code, as it's written, there are references to a second offense. But there was no definition for what a second offense was. Was, and so it was hard for us to take that into account when we're doing our enforcement. So instead of second offense, we're changing it to subsequent offense and so that any second or third or fourth or fifth potential offense would fall into that same category. Corrects to whom the fines are paid and a minor update to the administrative citation fines as well. And what those administrative citation fines are is a single fine for a single act that takes place, rather than a daily occurrence of a violation that continues to exist. All right, so how our code currently looks with the daily fines as listed here, this is the screen grab from our current code. Lots of different sections of the code referenced with different charges, reaching certain maximums. And then again, that second daily offense was undefined. The proposal will change it to just simply having a first offense creating an escalating fee or fine schedule where day one through thirty. I'm gonna step back a little bit. So after the city issues a notice of violation, anticipating these fees, or sorry, I'm using the word fees again, these fines being charged. There's a timeframe to allow for those corrections to take place. If those corrections aren't done within the allotted timeframe, typically fourteen days, then these daily fines, using that word again, fines will start to accrue. So day one would be after the compliance date has passed. If the violation hasn't been corrected, we would start there at day one where with the new changes, with the proposed change, it would be a hundred dollars a day from day one to thirty, two hundred and fifty from thirty-one to sixty, and then five hundred days for sixty-one beyond. And then if someone were to create a subsequent offense, then that starting range would just bump up to that two hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Quick question. A subsequent offense, would it be the same thing? Or if one property has a violation for nuisances and then later they have a junked in an operable vehicle, is the junked vehicle considered a second offense because it's on the same property, or is that a new first offense?
So that would be a new first offense in that scenario, and that goes right into my next slide. Subsequent offense would mean a violation of the same provision of code by the same person, whether it's on that property or a different property in the city, within a thirty-six month period of the prior violation taking place where it resulted in notice of violation, administrative enforcement order, or some other formal enforcement action from the city. So that's, that's what's being proposed as the definition of a subsequent offense. Updating who the fines are paid to. Currently in the code, it says paid to Provo City Finance Department. In discussing this with our finance department, they said, no, they don't pay it to us. It gets paid to Provo City. And so we're just making that updating the code as well. And the administrative citation, this has historically been used primarily by Public Works to enforce grading without a permit. In discussing that, this proposal, I asked if there were any changes that they wanted to see on that. And so the red strike through of various items in the grading without a permit were suggestions and requests from Public Works to make to this. And then in some conversations that we've had together, the idea of adding in a one-time charge for finding somebody in violation of the short-term rental section of code would be appropriate to have. It's, it's, it happens over the weekend or at some point in time that we find out. We can issue a citation that they've violated that code. This is just a separate tool in our toolbox that we'd be able to utilize in our enforcement against illegal short-term rentals in the city. And then briefly, along with talking to the Public Works about changes in their enforcement of, or in their ability to charge those administrative citations. The request was also to add in to the definition of a nuisance, failing to correct any grading activity done without a permit and/or failing to remove any fill or remediate any cuts to the fill that has been done without a permit. So just adding into the nuisance definition, addressing concerns that they see that allow them to better enforce those issues. That is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer.
So Scott, if I receive a letter that I'm in violation of one of these ordinances, and I have fourteen days to come into compliance or face the fine, right?
Potentially, yeah.
And that's a fine for the first, is day one the day I received the letter? Or is it day fifteen?
No, it would be day fifteen. So you would have a compliance date, and then the day following that compliance date would be day one.
Okay, okay. Any questions for Scott? Counselor Bogdan?
I have a couple. Okay, number one. I know Kendra's been good to work with people. Is this going to be something that Public Works, or Public Works, that you guys will do everything you can before you start charging these fines? I mean, if, like, we had a guy with a hurt back and Kendra had me organize some kind of a cleanup to help him. You know, she was really good with stuff like that.
Yes, absolutely. So this is our process currently is that we send a notice of violation, not threatening any fines, but threatening potential criminal prosecution. And we go through a process with that, that essentially is about a two-month process of enforcement. And if in, at the end of that essential two-month enforcement process, the violation still hasn't been corrected and they're not working with this, we don't have a plan, an agreement to work together to come into compliance, then our process, our plan currently is to implement, we are implementing this as the next step in the process, that we'll send a new notice of violation saying, look, we've been trying to work with you. We're continuing through the criminal prosecution route, but since you're not making any efforts to come into compliance, we're going to add on now civil fines.
So Brian, can we do that? Can we prosecute them criminally and do civil fines at the same time?
Those are two different questions. We can do what Scott said, which is different than doing them at the same time. Because what we're actually doing is we're prosecuting them for the first violation and fining them for the second one. Meaning if somebody commits a violation on January 1st, and we send them a letter, and fifteen days later, fourteen days later, they're still not in a compliance, we prosecute them for the offense that they are committing on January 15th. Two months later, when they still haven't come into compliance, we start fining them for the violation that they are committing on March 15th. So it's, it's different violations from a legal perspective, because it's an ongoing violation.
Gotcha. And then my other question was, according to this thing that's on the screen here. So if I have some gravel that's out on the street and I don't remove it, is that what we're talking about here? Because it's a public right of way, right?
Right, so that would be something handled by Public Works that you could potentially receive an administrative citation of a thousand dollars.
Or if, so are we looking at just debris? Like if I have a bunch of sand and then there's still debris on there, do I, am I responsible to clean that up for stormwater purposes?
I would defer to Public Works on that.
Gordon? Thanks, Scott, sorry. I'll pick on, oh, by the way, we're commenting on how, I like your tie, by the way. It looks better than my tie.
So if you do impede the streets, put stuff in the street that's going to cause a hazard, there's a process for getting permitted to have it cone, to make it safe. If people aren't doing it, they're just putting it, they can be subject to fines.
Okay, so as long as someone reports them, they report those through 311, just like?
You can report them right through 311, or we may see them. As a result, we, the police sometimes find them. And so there's a lot of methods in which they, it shows up.
And it's the same course? You give them two weeks to clean it up, or do you just say?
So
It's gone.
So a lot of these things are a little different, because if we see an immediate hazard or if there's a problem, somebody could be hurt because it's going in the road. We sometimes we take a little bit quicker action. Anyway, there's a number of ways we deal with it, because we might want, we can't wait for fourteen days.
Okay, but we can still have the ability to find them with this code, is what you're saying?
Yes, yeah. We just do it a little differently, because their, their issues are on private property. They've trespassed on public property when we get involved.
Okay, and does this also include those construction holes that sometimes we see contractors not covering like they should, or? Or is that a different issue?
So if they, say that again, if they dig a hole?
Yeah, if they dig a hole in the street and they leave it uncovered, is that the same?
So if they, so they, for them to do that, usually they have a permit. If they don't have a permit, there's a fine. If they've done a permit and they do it illegally or inappropriately, there's another fine associated with that.
But if they dig it and they don't cover it when they're done for the end of the day, they're still fine. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Are there any here who would like to speak, make public comment related to this item? If so, you can approach the podium. If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item back to council for discussion. Any questions or comments? Counselor McKay?
This is a long time coming, and we appreciate your work on this, Scott. We worked at the state level to pass some things to help with enforcement, and the state legislators kind of gave us this direction to go. And this isn't about the odd person. This is about repeat offenders. That is our issue. Our issue is the serial repeat offenders that are, you know, they put our students in danger and cause chaos in their lives because of illegal occupancy. They get kicked out and are homeless and don't have a place to live, and there are nuisances in the neighborhoods and with neighbors. And so these are the repeat offenders that are causing problems. And so, thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Counselor McKay. Any other council discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote on this implied motion. Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Thank you. This implied motion passes by a vote of seven zero. Next, we have a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Lakeview Fields Development Agreement to allow updated plans, optional basements, vinyl fencing, and a separate HOA for the subject property. This motion, this resolution will be presented by one of our planners, Jessica Daneky.
Thank you. Yes, I'm here to provide some context for this development agreement, and then we have our developer, Tyler, who is here to answer any additional questions. So just to provide some context, the area that's highlighted in red is the area that the development agreement will affect. It's part of the Lakeview Fields Development Agreement that was originally passed back in 2007. Plat A of that, as you can see, is pretty much all the way developed, just one empty lot left there. The proposed amendments have been reviewed by our CRC and the city attorney with any concerns that have been addressed and discussed, specifically the one that was raised was by Public Works regarding basements. And then here is just a plat map overlay of showing that their proposed plat still matches what was originally proposed with the development agreement. It's the same number of new lots that will be coming in. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Jessica? Thank you, Jessica. Are there any here who would like to speak to this item? We have an opportunity for public comment on this item as well. Tyler? There you are. Would you like to add any comments as the developer to the presentation that Jessica has made?
No, I think she did a pretty good job. We talked earlier, but really the main reason we're trying to amend the development agreement is because the one that was previously was pretty old and pretty specific, and it said, you know, you have to build these exact houses and this kind of fence. And so, anyway, those.
In fact, that development agreement was from when? 2007?
Seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
Okay. And to the comment earlier relative to allowance for basements, you mentioned that none of the models you're proposing for this development include basements. Is that right?
Yeah, and what, what we're saying here is that we would have the option to build them, but not the requirement, because the way the original development agreement was worded, it like conflicted with itself. But we've been working with Public Works and what we're going to be required to do if we wanted to do basements is cost prohibitive here. So we're not planning on doing basements, so.
Okay, and you also expressed a willingness to a certain percentage, percentage of homeowner occupancy units as part of this development.
Yeah, yeah, if that's, you know, what was brought up by the council for, you know, everybody to feel good about this, we work with, I think, Brian, and put that language in here. So, yep.
Any other questions for Tyler? Thank you.
Thanks.
So
Tyler, one more question.
So would you be proffering in this meeting that you're willing to have a a fixed percentage that would be for, or that would not be able to be rented in the first year after conveyance?
Yeah, I think what we kind of landed on is there's that standard language that, you know, you guys already kind of felt comfortable with. And we would say, you know, at least seventy percent would be subject to that standard language.
Well, there's two different things here, because he doesn't want, he only wants to do a percentage. Because our standard language is a hundred percent for one year. So if he's going to do it seventy, there's nothing about the one year. It's just always seventy percent can only, has to be homeowner occupied. And that may rotate through different homes over the years. has to be homeowner occupied, and that may rotate through different homes over the years. But that's what we talked about.
So that's that's what the proffer is. And Brian, you believe that the city will be able to work with him to get language in the agreement that would affect that?
Yes, I think so. But I do want to clarify, because we we talked, you know, about a bunch of different options in the work session. So I just want to make sure that what Counselor McKay just said and what the developer is proposing are the same. So you you are, in fact, proffering seventy percent owner occupied all the time, not just for the first year. Is that, because that's what Counselor McKay is requesting. And then, yeah. So I just want to make sure that I didn't confuse you by talking about our standard for a hundred percent, but you're wanting to do seventy.
Yeah. So like what we've done in other communities is we would say we're willing to, so like we're going to develop the lots, build the houses and sell them. What we're saying is we would record the development agreement with language in there that says every seventy percent of the homes will be sold to people that are owner occupied, right? Like owners will live there. And then that restriction stays in place for a period of years, is what we've done in the past. And so I don't know how that compares with what you guys have done, which was, I think you said something from the time a unit is sold, it can't be rented for a year after that.
Yeah, that's been our, as we talked about in the work session, that's been language that we've developed recently that we've been using. But as Counselor McKay points out, we've been using that language in projects where that language applied to a hundred percent of the properties. So a hundred percent of the properties can't be rented during the first year of each transfer of ownership, but after that they can.
So in perpetuity?
Yeah. Counselor McKay's concern with kind of trying to do a hybrid thing is it it opens up overlap, right? So she at least is taking the position that she would prefer if if we're not doing a hundred percent for a for a year, she would like seventy percent using the model that you just talked about that you've used in the past. So if it's if it's not a hundred percent, if it's a hundred percent, we could do the one year thing. If it's less than a hundred percent, she'd prefer the model where it's where it's, it doesn't open up for rental after the year. I guess the question is, if you're proffering that for only a limited period of time, we probably need to have that on the record here about what that amount of time is for, so the counselors can decide if that is acceptable to them.
Yeah. I I would I would propose that it would end after a period of, we've done five years, which I feel like is a pretty good amount of time, but.
Counselor Handley?
I'm fine with that. I think as we talked about in the work session, I'm I'm wanting to be sensitive to the fact that we still have, I mean, based on reports, I've seen only eighty percent of our, only twenty percent of our city can afford to buy a home in in Provo. So there's a lot of people who want to get into homes who can't. And I'm a little worried about overly restricting the rental market, because people will want to rent a home. And I think having a little bit of flexibility there makes some sense. It's a very desirable, single-family home neighborhood that will attract people who want to be there for longer term, but some people may not be able to be quite ready to buy. In fact, again, demographically, I think most people in the city are in that category. So I this feels to me like a pretty high standard and ambition for owner occupancy, which I think is great, but I'm not, I'm not wanting to be much more strict than that.
Thank you, Counselor Handley. Any other questions for Tyler?
I just want to say I'm, I would like more than five years. I think five years. For me to go down from every single sale to just seventy percent for five years is just way too too soon. I would like to see that stretched out longer for a longer period of time. I mean, you have a HOA with this that the HOAs can control that, right, and put that in their CRCs. So I think it would make a good community if that were more homeowner occupied and stay that way for multiple years, more than five, a lot more than five.
I think the only thing I would say is just something we talked about earlier, and really, no, we're not trying to change density here, or what we're trying to do is build some modern houses instead of the old houses. So I do feel like seventy percent five years is pretty good, considering what we're asking for. But I mean, I don't know how, if everybody feels that way, or.
Counselor McKay?
I'm curious, Tyler. So is your, your goal is to put them all for sale?
Oh, yeah.
Like, your goal isn't to rent out thirty percent to begin with?
No.
Correct? Okay, I'm good with the guaranteed seventy percent for five years. And because it mean you could, you could sell ninety percent of them and they be owner occupied. You're not looking to.
Yeah, no, you you can, our our company's Keystone Construction, we we build houses and we just put them up for sale on ZO and MLS, you know?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Now I'll open the public comment period. If there are any here who wish to speak to this item, you can come to the podium. If, yes, Sharon?
Sharon, Provo, mostly just had questions about enforcement, I guess. I love the project. I love what I heard in work session that they're different size homes. I know I love about my neighborhood is that we have, I think my neighbor has a one thousand square foot house, and it's great for some newbies coming in. And we have twelve hundred and another neighbor has eighteen hundred. I love the different sizes. I love the different sized lots that have gone along with it as well. Which I didn't see in that project, but neither here nor there. My concern is that if you're saying seventy percent of the homes have to be owner occupied. So I like the one year owner occupied for every sale. I don't understand the seventy percent, because if there's a hundred of our houses, thirty of them are rented currently, and I'm leaving and want to rent out my home, but I would be thirty one. I cannot now rent out my home, if I understand correctly, until the Jones move back or sell their home and live there. So I don't understand how that that feels like a a personal property enforcement problem. Now I've lost my property rights. But if I moved in with the understanding cannot rent it in the first year or two, then that's what I bought in my home. And I I understand that. But if you're telling me I can't, well, we've retired, this is our life, I may have to sell my home, if I understand correctly, or leave it vacant because until we get down to twenty nine again. So, thanks.
Thank you, Sharon. Any other public comment? If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item back to council for discussion. Chair Garrett, if you'd like, I'd be happy to address. That would be great. Thank you, Brian. So I think what's envisioned, and again, it hasn't been approved yet, so this may not be how it goes, but what what we just talked about in work session, I think what's envisioned is this development is going to have an HOA, and a lot of HOAs already have caps on how many properties within the HOA can be rented. I lived in one in in Orem a while back where they had a cap. Cap couldn't be changed without vote of the HOA board. And 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 if you, if the cap was already met and you wanted to, you wanted to rent your condo, you couldn't until somebody else stopped renting their condo, because you had to get approval from the HOA board first. This is a similar concept, that there will be an HOA, and the development agreement would require the HOA to have a cap, would require that a deed restriction be recorded on the property so that buyers know about this cap before they buy. And the notice would advise them this development has a cap. The HOA may not allow any more than this percentage to be rented at any one time. Provo City will not issue a rental dwelling license unless the HOA certifies that you're, that they are below the cap. And if you rent in violation, if you rent without a rental dwelling license, the city may prosecute you for renting without a rental dwelling license. So that's how the enforcement would work. Thank you, Brian. Any other council discussion or questions or comments? If not, we'll call for a vote on this implied motion and resolution. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
And Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
This resolution passes by a vote of seven zero. Next, we have an implied motion on an ordinance adjusting the common boundary between Provo and Springville along fourteen hundred north in Springville. This item will also be presented by one of our city planners, Jessica Donakie.
Thank you. Yes, this is bringing back the boundary line adjustment to be adopted by an ordinance. You previously saw the resolution to adjust the boundary line between Provo and Springville. That's highlighted and shown on the plat map. We've had our mandatory waiting period between the resolution and adopting the ordinance, and we have received no comments or protests. So this ordinance would just be ratifying that and sending it off to the state to get certified. Any questions?
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
This item is open for public comment. If there are any who wish to make comment, you can approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring the item back to council for discussion. Any comments or discussion? This is an item that we've discussed previously regarding this boundary line adjustment. I'll call for a vote then. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
And Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Thank you. This resolution, this ordinance passes by a vote of seven zero. Next, we have an implied motion on an ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding permitted uses and floor area ratio in the specialty support commercial zone. With citywide application, this will be presented by one of our, another of our planners, Mary Barnes.
Thank you so much. All right. So this is just showing where it is. We kind of already went through this during work session, but it's just that big vacant lot on North University Avenue near all the Jamestown retail. This is the ordinance text amendment that the that the applicant has applied for. It is to add indoor storage units and drive-throughs to the specialty support commercial SSC permitted uses and to completely remove the permissible floor area ratio requirement, as we discussed in work session. That floor area ratio requirement is really a kind of like an outdated type of a lot coverage requirement. So he's wanting to completely remove it. Staff recommended a thirty percent lot coverage requirement, just to cover all bases, just in case. That thirty percent simply came from the SC one zone. Planning Commission counter recommended a thirty four percent lot coverage based on the site plan that the applicant, the concept plan that the applicant did provide. They were very happy with what it looked like. And I don't know if I should just leave it there and leave questions for the ordinance text amendment, and then we can do the rezone afterwards. I do, I'm going to go through the rezone right now as well.
Let's just do the text amendment.
Okay.
To this point, yeah.
Sounds good. Any questions for me on that?
Questions for Mary on the text amendment? Yes, Counselor Bogdan?
Not for Mary. Gordon? I told you you should have sat on the front row. Okay, so for this, this piece of property at the neighborhood meeting and during planning commission, they brought up that northern street. Kevin, can we get a picture of the site plan? So that thirty four seventy. So I guess there is a single family home on the north side of the street. Can we go back to the slide that was you just had up there? Yeah. And I guess they've got some kind of a weird funky driveway going along there. And the residents say that people take out that mailbox all the time. And I know there was some concern about that street being really narrow from like the mailbox down. Do we have any? I mean, are we going to have them widen that section of the street, or how can we resolve some of those problems?
So so there's a couple of things. One of the things that we would require is a traffic study to verify the volume of traffic. One of the issues here is your geometric is really out of shape here, just because that driveway is in the middle of the street and creates a weird anomaly there. One of the questions that came to us, I don't remember who, but I spent some time talking to Mereditho and also to Brian about the legal aspect. If if we want to widen that road, we know the width of it, because you can see where it has been widened properly. There need to be additional right of way from this project in order to widen that road to meet the standard of the city. So in in that case, that driveway, the funky driveway would stay the way it is if that's kind of the direction we're looking at. Maybe there'd be some improvements to try to protect that mailbox. It is in an awkward place because of how the lane comes right into that road. So there'd need to be some kind of taper that was built in to drive, to bring traffic away from that road.
Well, it was just a concern with everybody, just especially if they're going to have, now we can go to the site plan, Kevin. Especially if they're going to have some kind of a drive-through there. The discussion went to how awkward you know, the the townhome access and the the drive-through access would be on that that weird section of road. And so that's just my concern is can it be resolved? How much money is it going to cost us?
I wasn't anticipating that spending anything. So so this would be a development expense if you made that a requirement, not as as some part of the process.
So do we have stuff in code that would guarantee that, or is that something that would have to be done through a development agreement?
I'm going to let Brian talk to you about that.
Yeah, I think it would be a development agreement, because in this case, the the road is already there. So if you approve the rezone of the entire property based on the site plan that you have in front of you, they don't have to fix the road. So in in essence, it becomes a question of, you know, from our prior discussions about developer development agreements. If you, as a counselor, are saying based on that concern, I would not approve this rezone unless the road is fixed as part of the development, then it's up to the developer to decide if that's feasible for them to fix that issue. And it would require entering into a development agreement to guarantee the fix.
And then back to Brian's comment, that fix could be if you worked out something with, and I'm not, I don't want to suggest that somewhere across the street, and we did their driveway, so it was different. The the road doesn't always have to come one direction. The fix could be, there's probably a number of ways that could, it could be split the difference, it could be all on this property, all on that property, a number of ways that could be fixed. So I think that would be something we could let the developer kind of wrestle through. But according to Brian, that'd be something you'd need to make as part of your motion at this time.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mary? Is the developer here? Would you care to answer questions or speak to this project? And and I understand you're the original developer of the Jamestown Community and Development, which we were commenting earlier is a wonderful part of the city, and we're excited to see this piece take part of that project.
Thank you.
As, you've seen the road there, thirty four thirty four seventy. Has it, has it caused you any concerns that at halfway, the eastern part of that is kind of only half of a road or three quarters of a road?
Sorry. There, you know?
Yeah. It has been, I've been told that the Public Works Department feels like the the current width of the paved road would be adequate
Okay.
for this project. Is that correct? For this project. Is that correct, Mary? Yeah, okay. Yeah, so um. I think the, that the road that we have there would be adequate.
Okay, in, including the anticipated traffic for any drive-through um facility and the additional six townhomes?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I failed to invite you to state your name.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Douglas A. Nielsen, the applicant.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nielsen.
Thank you for having, having me here. He might be happy to answer any questions.
Any, any other questions for Mr. Nielsen? Okay, I guess not. Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. Oh, yes, Counselor McKay?
Sorry, Mr. Nielsen. I do have a question for you.
One, one more question.
First of all, thank you. This is one of the best design corridors we have in the city, and you've made it beautiful, and I wish that more of the city had such lovely design corridors going on. Um, I'm wondering about the townhomes and if you plan on having them for sale and if there will be an owner occupancy requirement.
We have proposed that they be rental townhomes.
Okay, are you gonna hold on to all of them?
Um, I beg.
Are you gonna hold on to them then?
Yes, that's the plan. If we can get that approval.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Nielsen? Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are any here who would like to speak to this item, we'll open public comment at this time.
I'm Robert Hamm, and I represent the Riverside Neighborhood. And District One has asked me to speak to you tonight. Not sure how to go forward. I, I have comments on the zone change and also on the text amendment. If I can do that all at once.
Yes, that won't be fine.
Just a, a little history. Mr. Nielsen has brought this three times. Once about five years ago, about two years ago, and then last week. And just to speak to that, to give you some information that uh two years ago, there was a vote uh held by those who were there. There were seventeen there. There were seventeen that voted for approval on zero that probably uh voted for, which in my years, that's unusual in this. Uh, last week, my understanding is in favor of the zone change, there were twenty-five that voted approved, uh, one that voted against it. And the text amendment, there were uh, let's see, nineteen that voted for it and zero that voted against it. Uh, just briefly, I would, we really appreciate it as a neighborhood, Mr. Nielsen, and the product that's been there. I've worked on this for many years. Uh, along with that, though, we appreciate the quality and everything that's there. Just a couple of real quick um concerns, which probably come up as already has and will probably as this goes through the process. And the biggest one is the traffic, which you've already discussed. You'll have actually in the three buildings that are going for commercial, two of them will be uh drive-throughs. And then the, the most current building to the south in existing is soda delicious. So you're in four buildings, you're gonna have three drive-throughs. So I think there's some thought process that needs to go on there. Um, also, I know you're doing the traffic study, which hopefully will answer some of these questions. But um, the street of thirty-four seventy, people are coming off University from the north at a pretty high rate of speed, trying to cross over that traffic. And as they turn onto thirty-four seventy, both the home to the north and this development is going to have some traffic safety issues, especially when you put all of those drive-throughs on the north end. The other thing is the townhomes. Uh, neighbors have called me and requested that they hope those would be owner occupied and not rented. Um, and so I think those are the three issues. The multiple drive-throughs, the traffic. There's also neighbors on one hundred that have called, and they're concerned about where all this traffic going to go. I know Mr. Nielsen has been concerned himself. How do we get those people to go down to the light? And have a safe exit where on the north end, do they do a right turn only? Or do we have all of these people with their soda in one hand? And their hand on the wheel trying to make a left-hand turn on University and cross four lanes of traffic? Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Any other public comment?
Sharon, if you could bring up the slide with the actual text amendment, I'd appreciate it. Um, I, I stand because I think, and Counselor Bogdan, you can correct me if I'm incorrect, but this item about the text amendment, one, I want to say thank you to staff for adding the line so that we aren't left with a complete blank there and to planning commission for increasing it in lieu of his project specifically to thirty-four percent. I think that you brought it up here at this moment specifically because, as you see on the map, the suggestion was made that possibly we widen the road by taking part of Mr. Nielsen's property, which would, which would make his coverage percentages not possibly correct. And so I think that's why it was brought up here. If, if he's willing to bring that back a couple of feet, which would widen the road, and I don't know that it would solve the problem, but, but it would widen the road and give a little more leeway. I think again, if you look at the map that you're presented with, the problem isn't that the road isn't quite wide enough. As I talked to the neighbors, it's more that they have a blinded driveway because of, and, and with the north Jamestown part setback, the width of their driveway, they encounter people who don't expect that to be a driveway. And so they aren't yielding to people as, or the street isn't yielding to them as they pull out of their driveway. You know? Small town road, but not, not anymore. So I think that's the question here is if Mr. Nielsen gave up a couple of feet, would we need to change the text amendment percentage on it? If that was all.
Thank you, Sharon. Any other public comment? If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item to the council for discussion. Yes, Counselor Bogdan?
Gordon, she brings up a good point. Is the problem the blind driveway or is the problem that it's just not wide enough?
I, I think it's the driveway in the middle of roads, the issue.
So that's the problem of the property owner to the north?
Yeah.
Okay, and traffic we think should flow well even going across? Because we can't restrict what comes off of University Avenue because that's a state road. So we couldn't restrict that to right in, right out, could we?
No, you're not gonna do that.
That's what I thought.
I'm not gonna do that. Let me rephrase that. I'm not gonna do that.
That would require state uh action?
That'd be, yeah, the state would have to be involved in that.
Would, would it be possible to have a sign at the north exit that just says, if you're going south, turn right? So you go behind the development instead of trying to turn left on the university just to recommend people that that's a safer way to go? They get to a light down at thirty-third?
So, so there are possibilities, a number of signing and things we could look at. Um, the traffic study could illustrate maybe some alternatives that we could look at. Um, certainly is going to do some things by putting a hazard sign in front of the mailbox. It may, there may be some things that we want to do to really encourage it. Regardless of all the things we do, this development will, will bring additional traffic into the area. So the rate that we hit the mailbox will probably increase.
What about a right in, right out at the drive-through? So they can only.
Turn to the site plan. So, so, so I'm, I'm hesitant to get into too many details of the site plan, traffic analysis until we have a traffic study to look at and see what the volumes and how that's going to operate and how that's going to, oh, thank you. You can just keep that because I shouldn't handle that. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so are you talking about the retail commercial access, making that right in, right out? Is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, the one that's closest to University on the north there. That's supposed to be a drive-through from what I understand. That's why there are so many vehicles around that curve. Because that access, I don't know how many feet is that. I don't, I can't tell from the site plan. I mean, if they're like hurdling over four lanes of traffic from University and you've got some guy like with his food, like they were saying, just kind of dawdling around. If there's right in, right out, that, that alleviates that problem.
So Vern is here. He kind of works a lot with UDOT. There may be some opportunity to look at um, some kind of island in UDOT to stop access into that point. I, I, i- if all this is, is to look at that driveway that's in the middle of the road, I think we're going to an extraordinary effort to, to worry about that. I think fixing it or doing something on site would be a better solution than trying to do something on University. Just without looking at traffic state, that'd probably be the, the recommendation.
No, I mean, I mean, the neighborhood chair came up and he said that people are like bowling across University, right? They're like whizzing there to get to thirty-four seventy, right? They're not going down to the light down further south. They're like whizzing across all this traffic, trying to not get hit, right? Playing Frogger as we're going across. And so by the time that they hit this, beginning of this thirty-four seventy, they're going pretty fast. They're not doing twenty miles an hour. They're maybe doing fifty or sixty. And then all this sudden, you get Joe that's there with his soda and his stuff sipping away and just kind of pulls out and gets T-bone or something. That's, I think that's the concern. You've got fast and then slow Joe.
So we can sit down with UDOT and have a safety analysis, look at this intersection and see if they have the proper acceleration, deceleration, sight distance. Or what is the accident history? Are, is this, are we having those kind of issues? And um, and so right now, I'm speaking a little bit without the knowledge of what's happening, but all those things could be looked at and considered. And, and if something needs to happen to University, we, we would spend the time working with them to make those adjustments, whatever those might be.
Or if we had to do a right in, right out at that first entrance right there, that could also be a possibility? Do we have that leeway?
The, the traffic state will come back with some recommendations, and we would have to go to UDOT to see if we can get theirs.
But right in, right out would be his property, right?
Oh, are, are you talking about for the, yeah, so we could make that a requirement. Um, it'd be good to see what the um traffic study says. Again, if you make that a right out, I can see people saying, I'm just gonna go up and do a U-turn and come back anyway. So you know what I'm saying? So it's, I see that thirty-four seventy may not be a highly, high-volume road. And so by forcing people to make a right turn out of there, they may find a way around it, which makes it a little more unsafe if they're doing a U-turn through there. So I don't want to just force it for the sake of forcing. We'd have to put an island all the way down and start really, which is a pain for snowplows and all the things we're trying to do. So I don't, it seems like an extraordinary effort. Let's see what the traffic study says. I think we have to anticipate that people from this commercial area are going to be hitting University from this road at some level. Even if we do extraordinary pains to try to divert them, unless we really bring them all the way down three hundred with the island and they can't bounce over it, so.
Unless they have a good Hummer or something?
Yeah, they still shouldn't spill their drink.
Thank you. I guess I like this concept. I've heard really good things about this. And, but my one concern is a hundred percent rentals versus some homeowner occupancy and that. So thank you.
I just wanted to mention that um the applicant provided other concepts of um double drive-throughs. We don't have just um the, the planning commission recommended that he provide these um concepts or examples for city council. Um, we haven't gone through them at all. It's just what he sent in. We don't have any current standards about um not allowing double drive-throughs or anything. Our only standard is that we have to provide at least three stacking spaces for a drive-through. I believe with the code rewrite, we're gonna significantly increase that because drive-throughs are um, they can get so busy. But um just so you are aware on that drive-through question.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, Mr. Nielsen?
Just a couple of comments on the, everything that has been said. I just, which button up this? Yeah, okay, good. This intersection right here at thirty-four seventy in University Avenue, um, I think it'd be great if that were a right-only intersection. And you have throughout town, the town, you've got situations where you may drive into a project and you have to weave around and go a little distance so you can find a signalized intersection so you can turn right safely. I, I think with the, the speed of traffic uh on that stretch of highway, I think the speed limit is only, I can't remember, is it forty-five?
Forty-five?
Yeah.
Legally, we're not allowed to do a right only there. That's a state road, and we have no control over it.
Okay, but, but could the, the state to?
Yeah, the state could.
Yes, okay. But anyway, um, the other thing is um worked before, hasn't worked now.
We must have lost the battery, yeah.
Okay. You see where that walkway is? Uh, you, you see our property line is, that's the, that's the broken dash line? Just, just.
To the, to the worst.
Parking stalls.
Okay.
That's UDOT property. We have an encroachment permit. We landscape it. That, that could be utilized as a deceleration lane.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if that's one. And even if you had a, uh, we, we want, we want this intersection to be safe. So um, could you, could you put an island out there in uh the middle of University Avenue to prevent cars from heading south and turning left? Understanding that all the way up and down University Avenue, you have people turning left across traffic.
Right.
Between the signalized intersections. So that's a, that's kind of a fact of life. We have, we have those problems all over, all over University Avenue.
And that would also be a UDOT uh issue. Mr. Kessler may want. Vern, were you gonna shed some light on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Our traffic, traffic engineer?
Comment on this.
Yes, please.
With the change of land use that's gonna be taking place here, it is very likely that UDOT will require a, not only a traffic study, but they probably will require a right-in, right-out. We have five other right-in, right-outs currently on University Avenue where we have not had to go to the raised median yet. But UDOT will use that as a tool in the, in, in case we're not getting the compliance that we need, meaning we're seeing more accidents. So because of land use category, and the traffic study will provide some information for UDOT to make that decision if they need a deceleration lane. So anytime there's a change in land use, state code will allow them to re-review that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Vern. So that'd be a natural part of the process.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Nielsen?
Yeah, there was some concern about the double drive-up on each side of the building.
Yes.
How those cars merge.
Uh-huh.
Uh, the, the architect has designed other uh projects just like this. Small retail centers with drive-ups on both sides. It's very popular. High demand for drive-up windows. You might have a Subway sandwich there, some, something like that. You're not gonna have uh In-N-Out Burger. You're not gonna have McDonald's.
Mm-hmm.
But that concept of merging, uh, he pointed, the architect pointed out to me, he said, just look at the way the new McDonald's are designed. They have double drive-up order windows, and then you merge into one line. And then there's a, there's another lane where you can escape. And if you're gonna go park and have the food delivered to you, or you can easily choose the uh, the uh extreme right lane and move around the building to the left. So th- this concept is working very well uh around the state. And uh, he's given us some examples of that.
So, Mr. Nielsen, while you're at the podium, let me ask a question. Um, thi- this council has, for the last year and a half, uh, attempted everything we can to improve owner occupancy in this city. Since, because we're. Since, because we're a college town, we, it's. One area that, that we suffer in having only forty percent of our homes are owner occupied. We've been trying to move that needle. Your townhomes are lovely. There, there are no rentals that I know of around here. Everything is owner occupied. Would you be willing, as the developer, to proffer a percentage of the product to be owner occupied, say two-thirds or sixty-six percent? Four of the six that would be owner occupied and, and only two in the rental pool. As Mr. Hanley said earlier. We have a need for rental product as well.
Well, thank you. Would I be willing, I wouldn't do it willingly. I wouldn't want to do that. Depends on if I'm forced to, but this. We have, we, when we've completed Jamestown Square on the other side of the street, we determined that there were about three hundred employees. And when we, when I owned the retirement courtyard at Jamestown. We had a hundred employees, seventy full-time equivalents. If those, those townhomes, we feel like will, very small degree, but will eliminate some of the traffic on University Avenue. We, we anticipate that employees in the project here, there's hundreds of employees in this little quadrant here. That maybe six of them won't be getting out of the road as much as in the past. And I don't think that this six-unit project can solve the city's problem. I, I agree. I understand. I know that. That, that, I, I understand what you're trying to accomplish. I, I really do. I know that, I grew up in a little town called Richfield, Utah. And it was, growing up there really was like Mayberry. And I know that my parents, when they, they got married in nineteen thirty-six, they. Waited fifteen years, saved their money until they could buy a home. And that was typical back in, in, in the thirties. It, it wasn't a rite of passage like it was for a lot of us in, in my age group. We, we didn't think much of it when we. Got a job or finished school, buying a house was, is easy. I really feel for the, the, the younger families that are, they're challenged. Interest rates have doubled and prices have doubled in the last five years. We've got to do something different in this country for, for this younger generation. Cause that's part of the, part of the background and the, and the backbone of, of our nation is, is individual property ownership. So I understand what you're saying. And so, so when. My parents, after fifteen years, they were, they were able to buy their home. And then a few years after that. They, they left the community so that they could. Find a different opportunity and they, where they moved, they moved to Las Vegas and they discovered they didn't like it. So they came back. And they were able to rent a home for three years. And, and my, as a young boy, we, we lived in this rental home and. It was right across from the elementary school. It worked out great. So thank goodness. We had, there was an opportunity for us to, to live and stay in our community because there, there was a rental home. And I, I, I bought my first home when I was twenty-eight. So from age eighteen to twenty-eight, I, thank goodness, there were. Companies and people who were willing to, to rent a place to live. We, we understand that and very sensitive to the city's concern about that. I don't think I can solve that problem with this, with six units here. And so I, I don't really want to, 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 to have them owner occupied. I, I prefer to, to rent, so. I, I, I'd have to go kicking and screaming, but I understand what the problems are.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Okay, we have one more question, Mr. Nelson, from Counselor Whipple.
Yes, so is your intention to continue to own these six town, townhomes? Manage them and rent them out yourself?
Yes.
Okay, so your intention would not be to sell them to some sort of investor or somebody else who would do that?
No, we, we have, I have a rental management company, residential management group, and we have. Homes and townhomes in Pleasant Grove, Orem and Spanish Fork that, that we, we ran out and we would roll these into. That ownership and it's a long-term ownership, long-term investment as, as all of this.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any, we'll open this for, I don't believe I, I don't remember if I opened public comment or if I didn't close it, but we'll open public comment. At this time, if there are any here who would like to speak to this issue. Any others who are here? I think I did open it. Yes.
Naomi Flinders from Provo. I hear you saying that like. You understand this problem, that there's not enough housing on the market, but that you're not going to solve it. But why wouldn't you want to like contribute to helping a little bit, you know? I don't know, I guess that's all I have to say. The more people who can have stability instead of just being ripped around from one landlord to the next could be nice.
And I'm sorry, again, could you state your name for the record? You did. Thank you, Naomi. Any other public comment? If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item to council for discussion. Counselor Christensen.
Yeah, I, I like the project. I, the entire Jamestown project, I think, has been fabulous. I also. Am confident that with the right traffic studies and things like that, that we can resolve the traffic issues. The homeownership issue is a big deal. We have held people accountable who had ADUs, you know, and who had like a duplex. And so it's not like just the big projects make a difference. Every home makes a difference. Owning a home is the American dream and that's, that's disappearing. So I'm not talking about price points. I'm just talking about even availability. And so. I, I couldn't support this, even though I like the project and think it would be wonderful. I, I can't support it. Based on there not being homeownership available in the kind of ratios that you talked about, Gary.
Counselor Whipple?
So I, I'm supportive of the project. I would. I'm wondering if kind of a twist on what we normally do would work and that would be that. He would keep the project, he would keep those things and rent them, but if he ever decides to alienate himself from those properties. If he ever decides to sell them, then they would need to have that homeowner occupation. So that, because I, I trust him as somebody who uses his property well in the city. He's already proved he's. Responsible and a good player. So I would want to trust him to manage these six properties for as long as he wants. And if at any point in time, he or his heirs or signs decide that they are not going to do this. Then our homeownership thing would kick in once it becomes alienated. Brian's thinking quizzically about this proposal.
Well, I guess my issue isn't a bad landlord. He's demonstrated he's a great landlord. My issue is homeownership and making that available as part of the American dream. I mean, I think it's a significant thing. So I have no issue with quality of, of ownership and, and rental. I just think it's, it needs to have homeownership.
Brian, is my idea even feasible? Or are we just gonna reject it because Craig is not receptive?
Well, I was, you know, I wasn't sure whether to answer the question until there was a show of majority or to answer the question now. But whether it's feasible or not may affect that outcome, so it's probably good to address it now. It is a little bit tricky, so I'm trying to think through it conceptually. Normally, the, the challenge is. That the standard practice is that our, our development agreements terminate upon issuance of the certificate of occupancy. And so, you know, we have done things in development agreements that last beyond the development agreement, such as. HOA, CCNR, HOA rules, CCNRs, deed restrictions. None of those seem to apply to this kind of concept and like. You know, I'm trying to think, so I'm trying to think outside the box and figure out a way to do it. If the development agreement terminates upon issuance of the certificate, certificate of occupancy, it's no longer there to. Do what you're proposing. And I'm not off the top of my head thinking of another instrument that would accomplish the same thing. So. I don't want to say it's impossible, but I am not creative enough on the fly to have come up with a solution since you asked the question. The other thing, while I've got the microphone, that I will just mention is the version of the ordinance. And again, remember that there's two items here, right? So we're, even though there's a nine and a ten, we're, we've been mostly talking about ten instead of nine. Which is actually the, because ten is the rezone, right? So Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection from reviewing this is that you don't believe that the. Ordinance that you have in front of you for item number ten actually contemplates a development agreement. Th- this is number nine. That you've put on the screen. So. If we get to the point where a development agreement is actually necessary to prove the rezone. We probably need to continue this because we're gonna have to change the ordinance that approves the rezone. And as long as I've already got the microphone, let me talk about number nine too. I mean, I mentioned this to counsel, to Chair Garrett just a second ago. So. When Mary was doing her presentation, she actually proposed, she actually talked about three different. Possibilities for the lot coverage. The original applicant's proposal was not to have one and just delete the entire section. Staff recommended thirty percent limitation. Planning Commission recommended thirty-four percent. Our implied motion structure contemplates actually having a, all of those questions answered before you vote. In this particular case. The ordinance refers to an exhibit B, but there's multiple exhibit Bs in your materials. So before voting on, so, so before voting on the implied motion on number nine. One of you actually needs to make a motion as to which exhibit B you want to be included. So it's way off base from the question you asked, but just so you know procedurally.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones.
So thirty percent is what staff recommended and thirty-four percent is what planning commission recommended.
That's correct.
And we can take care of number nine. And then have the discussion on number ten and whether we want to continue that. For a development agreement or something.
Correct. And I, and I think that's appropriate with, I guess, one caveat, remember that. Number, item number nine is, is changing the text of the code. If you're only doing that. In furtherance of this project and you're not going to approve the project. I don't know whether it makes sense to change the code unless those changes are changes that we want in the, in that zone. No matter whether this project goes forward or not. So that may be a question for Mary. Or the other thing I would say is if that is, and again, I, I know I'm giving you more options, which is not what you need. But you can change the order of these items if the text amendment in your mind is contingent on this project.
Okay. Then I will, is, let's move to item ten and see if there's any additional council discussion on item ten. Which is the classification of property from professional office zone to specialty support, commercial. And low-density residential LDR zones. Any discussion on that item? Counselor Hoben?
I'd just say I'm supportive. I mean, six units, I know we want home owner occupancy, but if this were a hundred and six units or maybe even. Twenty-six units, I could see us, you know, pushing for that, but I'm supportive as is. We get to turn a vacant, empty lot that's been that way for a long time. Into a business and retail and six homes. So I say we go for it.
Counselor Handley?
I would agree. I think the location is not. As conducive to homeownership in some ways. I question whether or not that, that is sort of the. You know, most desirable and most likely desired use for that, for those properties. And I. Think we have lots of reason to believe that it'll have a lot of stability nevertheless. And it'll. Provide for local housing for workers there. So I think it's a great project and I'm, I'm ready to approve it. And I do think we need to approve this before the percentage issue gets settled because it's entirely. Seems to me it's unnecessary to change the thirty percent unless we approve number ten, so.
There may have been some ambiguity on the public comment that we held, whether it was relative to the zone. The. The text amendment or the. The text amendment. So I will open public comment to this item to number ten. Before we continue council discussion. Is there any public comment on item ten, which is. To, which is the rezone? Sharon?
So. And I'm sorry to bring that up, but I didn't comment on the zone change itself. Mostly what we heard in our neighborhood meeting last week. And I'm surprised those neighbors aren't here, but even they were in favor of this project. Or I should say, they didn't vote against it, is what I witnessed. And, and I did get the feeling that they felt like they're good neighbors. They just had those concerns with the road, which I heard you discussing University Avenue. They aren't on University Avenue. It's a different baby. I, I still would love to hear if, if we need to change the text amendment to thirty-five percent. If we widen the road to fix that after a possible road study. But other than that, I think this is a good. A zone change. I think it would be a good thing to help the project. I don't know about the homeownership thing. I see it's both ways, is needing some rental units also in the city. And, and I do wonder, and maybe it's stretching things a bit, but he's not selling them to begin with, so. Could we still put the hundred percent homeownership when he sells for the first year they're sold? Maybe it's too big a stretch, but.
Thank you, Sharon. Any other public comment? If not, we'll close public comment. Is there any additional council discussion? Any substitute motion? We're talking about item, item ten, the rezone. Okay, then I'll call for a vote on the implied motion for the rezone. Counselor Christensen, no. Counselor Garrett, no. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
No.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
No.
That motion fails by a vote of three to four. Brian, can a substitute motion be made after a failed motion?
Sure. I don't see why not. Yeah, I was trying to think.
I'd like to make a substitute motion then, relative to this ordinance amending the zone map classification. And if the, the motion is that we pass the rezone. Pending the, a development agreement wherein the developer would be willing to. Sell sixty-six percent of the project, of the, of the townhomes. And, and ran only two of the six.
If I might make a suggestion about the motion, I think I see the intent, but as I commented earlier about the fact that we don't actually have that version of the. Ordinance in front of us, it may make sense instead to make a motion to continue this item to the next meeting. And encourage the developer to submit such a development agreement if they are willing to. At which point in two weeks, you could vote on, on an ordinance approving the zone change with that development agreement if it's submitted.
Okay, that, that's what I'd like to do then. Does, does that require a vote?
Yes.
Okay.
You're, you're really just voting on whether to continue it and then the rest of it's. You're, you're really just voting on whether to continue it, and then the rest of it's up to the developer.
Right, okay. I will, I will make a motion then to continue this item for our, to our next meeting, which is Tuesday, May 2nd.
And I would second that.
A second by Counselor Christensen.
May 6th. Chair Garrett, there's a
Tuesday, May 6th.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And you've got a question from the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Nielsen?
What happens if the units are offered for sale and there are no purchasers? They have to remain vacant?
I guess you could say the same thing about the whole project, couldn't you? I guess you could say the same thing about the whole project, including what if you put them for rent and there's no renters?
It's a different question because if I'm required to sell them and there are no buyers. Now, if I, if I put them for, if I offer them for rent and no renters, there's nothing that this body can do, they're, they're going to sit vacant. Or you offer them for sale. It's just a question, it could impact a development agreement if we had the provision that dealt with that, that issue.
And if you offer them for sale, I can tell you that
you're more likely to get investors that will run by those and rent them rather than owner occupants. That's just the way, having been in the business. I, I don't think there is, as the gentleman pointed out, I don't think the this product is as desirable for for homeownership as other projects would be, as it would, as, as it would be for rentals. We, we don't have, we don't have playgrounds. We don't have walking paths, we have access to the
Right next to us, delicious.
The jogging trail goes up the canyons, people in there can, can exercise. But I, I would just ask each of you, if you were going to buy a a three bedroom townhome to make your primary residence, would you rather live in a community that had, had common areas and playgrounds? Possibly a pool. We, we own some townhomes in Orem and there's a, there's a, there's a pool there and there are owner, there are owner occupied units and there are rental units. But this, I would say, ask yourself that question. Which, which project would you rather, if you were buying this as your personal residence over a long term? Would that, would it be more suitable for, for rental or for, for ownership? If you had a choice between a townhome that was in a project that had other amenities and under this, under this zone and this, this number of units were not required to have those kind of amenities, it's too small of a project. So that's why it was conceived as a, as a rental project and it makes more sense to me as a business owner to make them available for, for rent. And so I would ask that maybe we, maybe you reconsider before we just continue this, reconsider my, my argument and maybe have some more comments among yourself and during the meeting and see if you might find a way to, to approve this project based on the case that I'm making. I, I really don't think it's suitable for the kind of product, the, the kind of problem that you want to solve as a city is a, is a, is a for, for a family, that families that want to live here and own. Now, we're, we're doing a single family residential 50 lot subdivision in Spanish Fork. And there's, there's, there's a big demand for single family homes in, in that area. It's up on the east bench by the Maple, Maple Mountain High School and there's speculation the temple might be up there, the church owns a large tract up there. And it's very conducive to single family owned units. But these six units are just not, not conducive to the thing that for the, to solve the problem that you're trying to solve. So I'd ask that maybe before you close it, reconsider the case that I've made.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. That's a fair question. I think we've been operating under the assumption ourselves as we have set this priority to increase homeowner occupancy, that there, there is significant demand for the opportunity to own, especially in Provo. And that, I think that's where we're coming from on this, but thank you for your comments. So we do have a motion and a second to continue this item. Unless there's a substitute motion, I'll call for a vote. Question, Counselor Whipple?
For the developer, would it be possible for you to build this project and just not build the townhomes at all? So that we only get the commercial element and we don't get any additional housing stock?
That's a possibility. And would it, would it be possible to bifurcate and only continue the, the low density residential segment, element of this application?
Because it seems that
So we could move forward with the, with the commercial retail.
Because it does seem that there's council support for the majority of the project. The only holdup that we have right now is some council insistence on homeowner occupation for six housing units. I would hate to see the majority of this property remain vacant while we're having this debate. I would love for you to be able to get moving forward on something that certainly is a benefit to the neighborhood and to the city. So I would do a substitute motion that we, oh, Brian, how are we going to do this? How do we cut out that corner?
Well, if I understand what you're suggesting correctly, and I think it is possible, we, we probably you'll need to continue this item until a little bit later in the meeting, so I can go make some changes to the document. But I, and move to the next item and come back to it. But I think, I think what your suggestion is a motion to remove all references from this ordinance to the part of the property that is proposed to be rezoned into LDR so that you can vote on just the rezone to SSC.
Right, and then we'd also be able to move forward with item number nine as well.
Right, and then continue to a future meeting when the developers, or, or continue to a future meeting any question of rezoning the LDR portion of the property.
Because if it would be a viable thing for you to move forward with the rest of it, right? If the housing component is not, is not crucial to the, the overall viability of the project, then I would like to be able to, to give you a path forward for the, the bulk of it. And that way, we would have time to work together to see if there can be an agreement on the housing portion.
Well, that would really be appreciated because we'd like to move forward as quickly as possible.
Yeah. All right, Brian, so I'm doing a substitute motion, but we will hold off on that until you can do some typing magic?
Well, what I'd like, what I'd like you to do is make the substitute motion, vote on the substitute motion. If it passes, then if you could move to number, to item 11, and I will go make my changes and then you can come back and vote on the implied motion to the now amended ordinance.
Okay. In that case, I will make a substitute motion on item number 10 that we will only be amending the classification of the portion that would be the specialty support commercial so that the low density portion of the project is excluded from the, the resolution and the zone change right now.
Thank you. Counselor Whipple, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Handley.
Is there any issue with a 34%?
That will be number nine, so then we would go back and do that.
Okay.
Any discussion? I'll call for a vote. Counselor Bogdan?
I'm going to vote no.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
So that motion passes by a vote of six to one. So Brian, if you'll make, thank you, mister.
Should we vote on number nine too then?
Yeah.
After, after, I think he's going to redo the
Do we need to, to do number 11 before number nine now?
I think, well, not, not strictly speaking, because it sounds like number 10 in its amended form is very likely to pass. And so I think number nine is okay. And now that I think about it, Gordon, correct me if I'm, Gordon or Vern or somebody, correct me if I'm wrong about this, or Mary. I actually don't think that the whole street issue affects number nine because the part of the road where things would change is adjacent to the LDR portion of the project, not the SSC part. And the, and the lot requirement language only applies to the SSC portion, portion of the project. So is that right? Okay, so I think you can go ahead with number nine if you'd like.
Okay, we've already had public comment on number nine, the permitted the text amendment change. So I'll ask for any council discussion. If there is none, I'll call for a vote. Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
That motion passes by a vote of seven zero. Thank you. We'll now move on to item 11. An ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property generally located at 1780 South State Street.
All right, I got, I got halfway to my office and realized I think I left you to do number nine wrong. Did anybody actually make a motion as to which exhibit you're picking?
No.
We did not. Okay. Going back, I move that we do the Exhibit B that has 34%.
Is there a second? A second by Counselor Christensen? Okay, sorry about that. We'll call for a new vote now.
So this is a vote, this is a vote just to, to include Exhibit B with the 34%, then you'll need to vote on the actual implied motion.
Well, we've already voted on the implied motion. Now we're saying which exhibit goes with it.
Yeah, I was going to say technically I should make you move to reconsider the previous vote and undo it, so they
Let's do it right.
Do, do you want us to reconsider?
I was going to say, so technically that would be the right way to go. So a motion to reconsider.
Make a motion to reconsider the previous vote.
I'll second that. Oh, George can second it.
Okay, vote on that to undo it.
Okay, we have a vote by, by Counselor Hoben and a second by Counselor Bogdan. Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
And Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
So that passes seven zero.
Okay, now we need a motion to choose the Exhibit B with 34% as the correct exhibit.
I have moved that.
Okay. Second.
I'll second.
And a second by Counselor Handley. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Thank you.
And now a vote on the implied motion to approve the amended ordinance. Because all you did was pick the exhibit. It's two step process always.
No, we made it a four step process because we're special.
See what happens when I leave the room for five minutes? So what's this vote, Brian? So now you are voting on the implied motion.
Number nine?
Number nine.
The implied motion on number nine to approve the now amended ordinance.
Okay. I will call for, I will call for a vote to approve the implied motion. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
That motion passes seven zero.
I cannot wait to read the minutes on this one.
Thank you very much, everyone. I'll be back in a few minutes now.
All right, thank you, Brian. Item 11 is an ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property generally located at 1780 South State Street from the agriculture A1 five zone to the planned industrial commercial zone in the Spring Creek neighborhood. Mary?
Thank you so much. All right, here is the context map just of the area. You can see the properties that are being proposed for the rezone right there. There's the Treeside Charter School. Just to the south is Utah County land that has not been annexed into the city. And here's that big intersection on Lakeview Parkway and State Street. So the current zoning map shows agricultural, future land use map shows commercial. And the proposed zone amendment is to this PIC or planned industrial commercial zone. The applicant is asking for this zone in order to build a five tenant flex office warehouse kind of space down here. Including, he's planning on putting a drive through here to, you know, specifically have some type of fast food component here. We kind of already went through a lot of these in the work session. But these were some of the concerns that came up in the neighborhood meeting a few months ago. A big one was, you know, access for the Treeside Charter School and the pickup drop off. Here's that north access that's specifically put right there so that any, anybody coming from this development would have to, would probably take this aisle and then, you know, come out to State Street this way or alternatively come up to State Street this way when the Remington Commons project is finished. That was one of the main concerns. Another concern was the proximity of this from the school. It's about 100 feet from the fence line over to the prop, the building where it is. And I've talked to the developer and we're actually going to be moving. Again, this is a concept plan, but in the project plan, he's going to be moving it more towards the street anyways. Just so you're aware. Planning Commission had some concerns on the types of uses permitted in the PIC zone. I listed some of those for you. They also had concerns about the permitted noise levels. You can see those, that's straight from city code. I can go over that if you would like. And then there's that concept site plan. Becky, you had that comment in work session about loading docks and how you feel like if loading docks are there or not, then that kind of would be a really big indicator of if there's going to be an industrial use or not, specifically loading docks on the south side here. I talked to the applicant and he said he's only planning on doing, you know, the overhead doors, that kind of thing. There wouldn't be any formal loading docks that a semi could fit into. He said there isn't room for that here. There's only about 46 feet or so from here to the property line on the south, so there isn't room for any type of big loading dock, but there would probably be some like overhead doors for, you know, smaller deliveries. Here, the applicant, I had him provide some pictures this afternoon of some of his previous projects that he has done with overhead doors. Can see this one is glass, this one is, it's got, you know, some glass in it. Anyways, so he's saying that the loading docks really not possible to put them there and he wouldn't want to put them there. This is going to be kind of a smaller, smaller product and he's planning on just overhead doors. So hopefully that answers your question. Any, any other questions for me?
Any questions for Mary? Thank you, Mary. So the developer is not here then?
He is here, yes.
If the developer would like to come forward, we can see if council members have any questions relative to this project. And could you please remind us of your name and city of residence?
My name is Dustin Cutler. I live in Lehigh and I'm the developer for, I believe we called it Pronghorn Business Park, if I, if I recall correctly, so.
Yeah, great. Does anyone have any questions for Dustin? Counselor McKay?
Your other, your other projects look really nice. I hope you'll do a nice design element with the brick and stuff and make it a higher design level. That looks great.
Thank you.
Dustin, I remember when you first presented this in a work session, there was talk about the, the location next to the Treehouse School and parents possibly using the space for drop off, pickup. You didn't have any problem with that. You, you, you thought that truck traffic through the property would be minimal and that instead the surface parking area would probably be used more by parents picking up children.
We, we actually have a project next to a, another charter school in Pleasant Grove and that consists of four 36,000 foot buildings, no loading docks. We've never actually done any projects with loading docks. We've never actually done any projects with loading docks. We prefer to let large industrial guys target that kind of clientele. We focus more on small scale, ends up mostly being retail, you know what I mean, dance studios. This will be our first foray into a drive-through. So, you know what I mean, a food, a food tenant, something along that lines. But I can tell you, being next to a charter school, their traffic is worse than anything I've ever seen before. They overflow onto all things and to be honest, the, the headache of traffic will not be from a small building like this. You know what I mean? Like it comes through, parents coming will always choose to skip 20 cars in line and cut through our project. And we realize that the hours of, and our other projects, it's 8:30 and 3:30, it's a disaster. No amount of signs can tell parents not to try to cut line to pick up their kid an extra 30 seconds earlier. So yes, do we believe that the traffic, real traffic issue is from the school and not from us? Yes, fully. Parents will undoubtedly use, if they pick up at the pickup circle, will come, cut right and come out State Street and get to that light faster. I would love to say they won't, but they, they will. Speed bumps, whatever we do there, but we also view it as a short term, you know what I mean? Those moments of the day, it comes and goes pretty quick. It shouldn't disrupt our business tenants. Might be free advertising forum. At least people recognize, oh yeah, I know this business is there because I pick up my child from school. State Street's already busy. So yeah, our, our primary concern is, is kind of reverse of the school's concern. It's not so much will the occasional person pull out and want to go? I don't know the light plans for that section of State Street with Remington Commons. I know due to recent fires, they've kind of had a slowdown in how fast their occupancy might be going up. But I didn't know, we haven't talked to UDOT besides for our access, if there was any plans at any point in time for lights, either at the primary school access or that next, where those three buildings burnt down, if there was ever plans for a light there. So in the future of State Street, as State Street continues to be developed in that area, I would suppose if there's a light up there, people will work their way up if it's too hard to turn left there. And some of that determines, I believe it's a car wash that bought the ground across the road from us. So some of that might be determined by ease of access. Right now it's, I've been down there a lot. Not very busy, you know what I mean? A little bit during school period, yes, there's a number of cars there, but 90% of the day it seems pretty light traffic to cross State Street in that section.
Construction, the disruption caused by construction and noise have also been mentioned. From the time you, if you were to receive approval, from the time you get a permit, how, what's the anticipated build-out for a project like this? Is it a year or less, more?
Less than a year. Like from the time we break ground, it will be primarily masonry, which is not actually allowed construction. There's a steel frame inside, but that's, as far as our job site, the loudest section will be the earthwork going on. The heavy equipment there, which usually takes two to three months. This is a pretty small site. The only issue is there's some retention, some retaining walls along the lower section. It drops off quite a bit between our parcel and the neighbor section that's still in Utah County. So mostly just some beeping, heavy equipment, some loaders and stuff going around. But as far as framing and sawing of lumber, limited to none. Yes, there's some sawing of some block on corners and stuff like that, but it's pretty, I would say, minimal. Like we've built next to people before and we haven't had complaints over noise yet. So that's kind of where we, we look at.
Any other questions for Dustin? Counselor Bogdan?
Any soda licious or pink box that'll go in there? I bet you'll learn a lot of business during 8:30 and.
At those times of day. And that's what, that's realistically what we're hoping for in that, in that stretch of State Street. There's, I can't think of any all the way from the Maverick down on the corner to that exit. There's no food options along that section of State Street that I can, that I can think of.
People are looking for a peat box for promo. Yeah, try that.
Yeah, we'll propose, we hope whoever comes and, and wants it, we hope they're a great tenant. We'll of course vet them to hopefully be a, a great business for that area.
Thank you, Dustin.
Any other questions?
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
This item is open for public comment. If you'd like to make a comment relative to the project, please come to the podium. If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item to council for discussion. If there's no discussion, we'll, we'll move to a vote then. Counselor Hanley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett? Yes. That ordinance passes by a vote of seven zero. Thank you.
Sure, Garrett, we're ready for number 10.
Okay. Brian, could you read the revised implied motion?
Yes. So what I've done, so the, based on the previous motion, I've amended the ordinance to which the implied motion applies. There's two, this is two versions of the same thing. This is just illustrative purposes. On the left is the red line showing what I deleted where, so I just deleted all references to the low-density residential zone, including down in the exhibits, I deleted the legal description for the property that was going to, that was proposed to be rezoned LDR. So on your right is the ordinance that you would, that you are actually voting on, which proposes simply to approve the portion of the property shown on the map as being changed to SSC to that zone.
Great, thank you. Any council discussion or questions? Counselor Bogdan?
So Brian, remind my brain, do we have to vote to continue the LDR section after this?
I understood that to be part of Counselor Whipple's motion when she, when she moved to change this. So I think that's automatically happened.
Okay, so we just have to vote on this and then we're good to move on. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or discussion? Great, I'll call for a vote. Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett? Yes. Counselor Hanley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
That motion passes by a vote of seven zero. Thank you for your work on that, Brian. We'll now move to item 12. An implied motion on an ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property generally located at 130 South, 2050 West. From one-family residential R18 to one-family residential performance development overlay. This will be presented by one of our planners, Dustin Wright.
All right, thank you, council. So this item here that you can see, it's a three-acre site. The applicant is applying for the PD overlay zone to allow them to build some clustered townhomes on that property. As opposed to doing the current, what the current zoning allows for single-family detached structures. So that's, this area highlighted in red is currently zoned for R18 residential. If you recall, the northern portion of the same parcel was rezoned in 2023 to the mixed-use zone that had ground floor commercial and then 60 units, residential units on the remaining portion of that MU zone with the intent that the southern portion was to remain as the R18 residential zone. And then our general plan, as you can see here, shows residential for this portion. The planning commission denied the concept plan that was presented to them. It, they did not find that it met the concept plan, didn't meet the requirements for the zone. And so this rezon does not have a concept plan that goes with it at this time because that was denied. And then the southwest plan calls for three units per gross acre is kind of the recommendation for development out there. So for those reasons where this currently has zoned can meet a lot of the goals and policies that the city has as far as providing owner occupancy opportunities. There's an overlay zone that it currently allows for ADUs for owner occupied properties, which helps with affordability and things like that, which are also policies and, and goals of the city. So that's kind of an overview of this item. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Dustin on this project? Counselor Bogdan?
I just have a comment for Chair. We seem to be losing council members. Is there a way we can take a break? Let everybody do what they need to do and then come back and continue the meeting?
Okay. Okay, we'll take a 10-minute recess and reconvene at 8:16.
Dustin, if you want to come back to the podium, will, did you have any additional items to present or just open to questions now?
Does anyone have any questions for Dustin Wright on this proposed ordinance change?
Does anyone have any questions for Dustin Wright on this
proposed ordinance change? No, 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 we're first of all. Okay, I know questions for you, Dustin. Thank you very much. Is is Terry here for the developer? Okay.
The Terry, you're the applicant on record? Okay, could you speak to it?
Oh, okay.
Chair, I had the opportunity to listen to your your work meeting, and so I changed two of the slides. Is it okay if we pass out those paper copies?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm Steve Turley, and I am the applicant. I'm the owner of the property, and I'm a resident, proud resident of Provo. The, can we bring up that presentation? Thank you. Let me good use of your time. My hope Chair and Council is for dialogue tonight. I've had the opportunity to to make a number of submittals with Provo, and sometimes it takes a while. And I know that you're the decision makers, and so I wanted the opportunity to come and talk to the decision makers, and hopefully have dialogue to understand how we can balance the competing priorities that that are going on in the city. And I have an immense amount of respect for you all trying to balance what must seem like a competing interest that sometimes are irreconcilable. I put the first slide together just to just to reiterate what we all know, and that's and that's the the housing goals that that have been expressed by you and 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 for my purposes, I was I watched the housing summit that went on a couple of months ago, and I almost felt like it was an invitation. It was an invitation for the community to come together and to find a way to to provide affordable housing opportunities. And 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 while I I could sit on this on these acres that I have, I I spent some time thinking about what what could be done with that to provide affordable housing options. And and taking that invitation, I I wanted to come and talk to you about about maybe a concept that isn't perfect, but a bit worthy of consideration. I'd appreciate your feedback. You'll see in those second, the second and third or the second paper, our our clustered concept. We really struggled with this this piece of ground because it's so narrow and because it has that frontage on twenty fifty west, but the but the the prohibition for having any driveways on twenty fifty west means that we can't access it. We can't put flag lots on it. We can't put driveways on it. We can't do the we can't anticipate any parking to be along that area there. And so we put together a kind of a hybrid of of a pocket neighborhood and a and a and a and and this clustering. We we took note of the fact that immediately across the street is the same zoning they're asking for. The the R one eight PD is immediately east across the street and parallels our project identically. This project that we proposed is three acres, but you'll see that we have seventeen acres with one point seven five acres of open space. At the planning commission, they made a good comment that that the road bifurcating the property didn't seem to make a lot of sense in that in that open space area. And so we threw together the the we changed the road so we could consolidate that open space even better. So why the PD overlay zone request? Well, first of all, we went to staff and asked, and that's what they suggested. They said if if this project or this property clearly needs some flexibility in its development, and so or some some of the tools that are available in the PD to be able to allow for this thing to be developed efficiently. And and like I said, without those driveways, we we had to do some clustering. We had to do some creative creativity. I I would draw your attention to the third point here on this rather boring slide, and it talks about variations. The the your ordinance allows you to make variations to the underlying ordinance within the PD ordinance. It allows you to to look at it and say, no, Mr. Trill, you missed it on this, and you missed it on that. But but if you could, if you could modify a little bit here, I think we could get a little closer to it. Ultimately, with the goal of owner occupancy, we set down this, we set down this path, which I'm hoping you'll give me the opportunity to discuss. There's been, there's been some confusion. We don't know where the confusions come from when it comes to density calculations. So we put this another rather boring slide in. I'm pretty good at those ones. The R one eight density with three point oh three acres, taking out the roads to the north and to the south and to the east, leaves a net of two point seven six acres times forty three five sixty divided by eight thousand. The the base density as per your zone is fifteen units. On the right, you'll see that the PD allows for that same base density to to receive a bonus if if we add some variation to the units, which we did, which gets it up to six point five two, and the ordinance says we round that up to seventeen units. So this is our, this is our ask, but when it comes to the sewer capacity, which seems to be a pretty important issue, but I don't want it to get in front of the zoning issue. If there's a sewer capacity issue, meaning we can't add more units than three to the acre, I understand, and I wouldn't ask for anything that the system can't handle. And so when in your in the neighborhood plan where it says, given this constraint, the need for and and the and the need for diverse housing options, Provo City encourages developers to submit ambitious, creative plans that provide a variety of lot and housing sizes. So for a developer to get really ambitious and creative, that's the invitation I I was happy to undertake. And I and I direct your attention to this, to this here. It's used everywhere. Sorry. It may not be, it may not be something the Provo is very familiar with, but the sewer holding tank, it it's a concept that when we started looking into it, we found out that it's 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 prolific in in many areas of the United States and the Western United States, where the concept is simple. And that's where I'll draw your attention to this one here. The the black line is the is the sorry, the how's it phrased in Bonn and Collins Plan? The west, the west side will use their wastewater will will follow that black line in terms of how many gallons flow through the system. And you'll see that 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 blue or purple line towards the top is the maximum capacity, where if it hits that at the peak hour towards the later in the in the evening, the the system would be overloaded. That's not the point. The point is, at rush hour traffic, we're not trying to put more traffic onto the freeways. We're not trying to put them on our corridors. So so this system, simply during the peak system, during the peak hours, holds this, holds the wastewater. And then at the time that it holds the wastewater, releases that, just like we release traffic onto our our on our busy corridors when it's not rush hour. And so and so the sewer capacity issue can be overcome. It's not necessarily the zoning, or it's not necessarily the sewer that holds back the zoning, because we can overcome that. But I want to talk really quick about the owner occupancy versus rentals. I we're in the market. We're deep in the market and and feel pretty confident about sharing this this assessment of owner occupancy versus rentals. If if these targets or if our target price for these rental units are are four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, when you add up the costs for rental units, you come up with a cost of these units at at current rates for for management fees, for for reserve, for mortgage, for the interest rates. We're talking about four thousand, over four thousand dollars. And if the if the market can bear a rental rate of fifteen hundred on the low end and two thousand on the high end, you're talking about someone, an investor being willing to lose two thousand dollars a month on the high end, lose twenty five hundred dollars on the low end in order to be able to have the pleasure of renting this property. Quite frankly, I just don't see it happening. I don't, I I can't see a market driven to lose money as they as they move forward. But but to this point, I have I have no problem if the if the concern or the willingness on the part of this council is to ensure owner occupancy. I'm I'm in. I'll put a development agreement together, and I'll proffer fifty percent owner occupancy restrictions on this property without blinking an eye, because I don't think there's going to be, I don't, I think that the ones that are allocated even for rental purposes, I don't think that they're going to be, I mean, if they were, they would be rented. So 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 from here, happy to have that, happy to have that dialogue. If that number, if that number for, because we we also, of course, look into feasibility as to as to if the project will work or not. If the, there's a, there's a, there's a every time you put a restriction on a property, the value goes down. It just does. It's a market, it's a market factor. If the if you wanted a hundred percent owner occupancy, de restriction, I'd be happy to give it at at R two density, which R two, the R two PD allows would allow for five more units. And and a total of twenty two units, you can have a hundred, a hundred percent of them be owner occupied. No, without without reservation on my part, because I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any pressure. I don't think there would be any pressure to rent that. So here, standing in front of you, I'm happy to proffer that. And and if there's dialogue, I hope we can, I hope we can finish that discussion. Last of all, I I want to, I want to speak to the housing affordability thing, because as a as a person on the street doing this all day, every day, I I ache a little bit, and and so I ran some numbers, Counselor Handley, like you did at the at the housing summit. But a townhome, if you if you look at those the the payment, the the annual income required to make that payment, it it's painful that less than ten percent of the occupants of Provo can qualify for a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar townhome. That's that's painful. But I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to sidestep the discussion about the affordability of a single family detached home. When that, when that, when that payment is is approaching six thousand dollars a month, Randos, ChatGPT ran those numbers for me this week. And so if you can believe ChatGPT, I I can't imagine when 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 I looked at those numbers to see that less than five percent of Provo's residents could qualify for that mortgage. Based on the median, based on the income of of Provo, I I would not build single family homes on that property. I wouldn't do it. Not that, not that I have a problem with single family homes, but they but they would be, I think, the moving housing in the wrong direction as far as affordability. And if we built those homes, they would never be affordable, because they're just going to continue to appreciate their continue, continue to outstrip the median income of those or the affordability of those that can handle it in Provo. So we had, we had an opportunity to discuss this with the with the neighborhood, and and they were resounding in their in the support and happiness for it. So I, who knows, maybe they're here to 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 clobber me from the back. But I I hope that in the in the context of of this discussion, that it is a discussion, that we have the opportunity to talk about. If you want owner occupancy, we can give it to you. There's a price, and I don't have a problem doing the owner occupancy restriction. But I hope in this in this opportunity for dialogue, sewer isn't the tail that wags the dog, because we can overcome the sewer if you let us put in those holding tanks. We can handle that. And so now it's a question of density. But where do you want density? Do you want density by our nodes? By those, by those, those collector streets? That's what we're offering. That's what we're trying to produce or do it. That's what we're trying to offer to this to this part of town, and we do it with with it. And I and I I say this most sincerely with it with an awful lot of respect for the balancing act that you guys have as far as as far as keeping neighborhoods intact, but keeping the right people in those right neighborhoods. I hope that you'll 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 give me the opportunity for dialogue. If there's a, if there's some, if there's some dialogue that could come out of this, consider, consider a continuance so that we can have the decision makers share what they want. But I'm here to offer affordable housing. That's what you want. Any questions, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for the developer, Mr. Turley, or for the applicant? Terry? Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Turley. Thank you, Terry. This item is also open for public comment. If there are any here who would like to speak to this item, they can approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and come back to the council for discussion. Dustin, did you get a copy of the updated slides? Just based on the presentation that you heard, any personally, I would benefit from having our staff. I I'm grateful, Mr. Turley, for the time that you've taken to respond to issues that were raised during our work session today and to come prepared that way. I feel like there are components I'd like to take more time to review myself and certainly get feedback from our staff. Other input from counselors?
I'm ready to vote.
Ready to vote, this Counselor Bogdan, Counselor Handley?
Well, yeah, I just, I feel like that was a lot of information that I didn't have before, and I don't know, you know, anything about holding sewers. So, for example, holding tanks. So I don't know if there's an opportunity for our staff to give us some information about their perspective on on some of those ideas, but it feels like a lot of information that I don't have the confidence to be able to process without having this information before the planning commission and and before our staff until now. What's that?
The holding tanks did go before.
They did.
Yes, yes, they did. It was talked about.
And what was the staff's response to that?
This hasn't made it through CRC, and that's one of the reasons why staff is asking that we vote this down. There's a lot of stuff that staff has not had the chance to review.
Others? If there's no council discussion, I will call for a substitute motion, if there is a subs, interest in a substitute motion. If not, I'll call for a vote on the proposed, on the implied motion. So this is the ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property located generally at one seventy south, twenty forty west, from one family residential R one eight zone to one family residential performance development overlay. Counselor Handley?
No.
Counselor Hoben?
No.
Counselor McKay?
No.
Counselor Whipple?
No.
Counselor Bogdan?
No.
Counselor Christensen?
No.
And Counselor Garrett, no. That item fails by a vote of seven zero. Next, we have a an ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding use of transportation utility fee funds and amending the consolidated fee schedule. This will be presented by Gordon Hayte, Public Works Director and Vern Custer Traffic Manager. First, Vern.
Good evening, Chair Garrett, Vice Chair Whipple, members of the City Council, and your confucy. Tonight I get to present on transportation utility fees, and I have a brief presentation with your approval. I could proceed with that.
It'd be great. Thank you.
This is what we'll talk about tonight. I have a few slides that talks a little bit about the history and the rates and the trip generation rates, our maintenance needs, and then the future rates with new ordinance language as well. Provo City was the first city in the state of Utah to adopt transportation utility fees. They did this study in twenty thirteen. Fee collection began in twenty fourteen. There was other cities that tried to implement transportation utility fees, and their studies weren't quite as robust as Provo Cities, and therefore there was litigation proposed against Pleasant Grove City when they adopted their utility fees. In twenty twenty, it went to the district court, and it ruled against traffic, transportation utility fees, but upheld by the Utah Supreme Court in twenty twenty three. Since that time, there's been a couple attempts to codify transportation utility fees in the Since that time, there's been a couple attempts to codify transportation utility fees in the Utah code. And twenty twenty four, there's House Bill three sixty seven. And in twenty twenty five, Justice passed legislative session, both the House and the Senate, uh, proposed, uh, very similar bills with, uh, a couple of different, uh, uh, exemptions. Uh, we think that someday it would likely be codified in the state code. This is our current, um, rates and our original rates in twenty fourteen. You see that we adopted a total of eight categories. We had two residentials, four commercials and two public facility uses. All these uses are based upon trip generation rates as found in the Institute of Traffic Engine, uh, Traffic Engineers, I T E. I T E does all these studies nationwide. And if I do a study, I could even submit, uh, these trip generation rates to them and then it would be included in their studies. Some very familiar land uses, there'll be hundreds of studies. And some peculiar land uses, there'll only be a handful of studies. And so this is our original rate and our current monthly rate. In eleven years, we've only had one increase of five percent. I'll pause.
And I think it's important to say that these prices were already half of what our studies said they should be back in two thousand fourteen.
Very good point. So, um, and I think I have that on the next slide. So let's move to the slides. Uh, I know the councils ask, well, what kind of land uses fall into the various categories? And of course, everybody knows single family and multifamily. Those are easy categories to, to interpret. Um, where it gets a little bit, um, more complicated is understanding everything from a small insurance agent, a one man shop, all the way down and, uh, to a big box retail like Walmart or, um, or a, a big grocery store. So as you can see, they produce a variety of trips, uh, to their businesses and to their locales. And then the public use often includes government offices or post offices or hospitals, universities and those types of things. We believe in good roads cost less philosophy here. Um, our consistent funding allows us to regular treat and maintain our roads. Um, adding preservation to our roads allows for the lifespan of the road to continue, um, in, in, elongated. Um, delays push maintenance to expensive full restrict reconstruction of the road. And then of course, inflation weakens our ability to adequately, uh, provide the funding for our roads. As, um, stated, our original back in twenty thirteen, our original maintenance costs were about four million a year. And, um, we funded two point one million through the transportation utility fees. So about half. This is our goal. Our goal is to have a remaining service life that is the sweet spot. And what I mean by that is we don't do the gold standard or platinum standard when it comes to roads and using an enormous amount of maintenance fees. We're a little conservative, quite frankly, a little frugal. And we try to maintain our roads. What I call the sweet spot is that twelve to fifteen years of remaining service life. You can see where we're at over the years from twenty eleven, which we were below ten, all the way to twenty twenty two, which are just below twelve. So here's our potential rates for the next few years as we look at our transportation utility fees. Uh, this, uh, you have before you as a schedule, uh, ordinance change as well as the potential ordinance amendment. And, uh, the ordinance amendment would include reasonable the studies that are incurred through the cost that we could use the cost of the transportation utility fees to do the study. And that just kinda codifies that along with reasonable administrative costs. So that's all I have unless council members have any questions or comments for me.
Any questions for Vern? Thank you, Vern. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Gordon, did you have anything to add or just responding to questions if? Okay, great. Thank you. This item is open for public comment. If there are any who have come to speak to this issue of the transportation utility fee and amending the consolidated fee schedule, please feel free to come to the podium.
Hello, council. This is Eric Davis from Brigham Young University. Um, I do have some concerns. Um, and council is aware of BYU's position with regards to transportation utility fees. I don't need to go over that in more detail. Um, I would point out that the Supreme Court in the Sage decision, it's Pleasant Grove, approved transportation utility fees in principle, but not as applied. That question was remanded to the courts. And the challenge has always been and it always will be whether an ordinance can be drafted that meets the, the test, um, of, uh, of equity and proportionality that, that's constitutionally required. Um, the, the concern that I have is that the BYU has is that city streets are not truly a utility, but public property. And that transportation utility fees, not truly fees, but a property tax. Um, the proposed changes, the ordinance exacerbate those problems by increasing the fees by fifty two percent over the next three years. Um, the intent appears to be have property owners pay all of the cost of road maintenance while other drivers and users of the roads pay none of the cost of road maintenance. Um, but obviously property owners are not the only ones who use the roads. There are others who use the roads and some of the most in heavy users of the roads include companies like Amazon and UPS that don't own property in Provo and so don't pay any fees for the use of the roads. Um, the other quest, problem is that the more you expand uses of this, these fees, the more it looks like just revenue generation and not a fee for services provided. So there are a number of questions that I'd wanna ask. Um, I don't, I'm not in a position to ask questions here. I understand that, that, that the council should be asking.
Does, does anyone?
Doesn't he get three minutes? Cause he's a neighborhood chair.
Representing BYU?
Yeah, he gets one more minute.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor McKay. Questions I would ask is who is the intended beneficiary of these fees? Is it the fee payer? Is it the public in general? Um, what services do fee payers get that the general public doesn't get? What pay, what are we paying for when we pay these fees? Then I have questions specifically about the ordinance amendments. What is included in the reasonable administration costs that are being added? Who determines whether they're reasonable? Um, and whether they're sufficiently related to the services provided? And then, um, uh, my last question actually was able to talk to Vern Kessler in the, during the recess. I thought we were gonna play kickball. He wanted to talk shop. He answered my question about, um, and, and we're going to meet and talk about that a little bit later. Um, but my, those are.
Any questions for Eric? Uh, councillor McKay?
It's more comments. Should I wait? It's comments, it's responding to what he said. Should I wait?
Uh, yes, uh, if it's not a question. Thank you, Eric.
Thanks.
Any other public comments?
Naomi, I love that you're getting your.
We need to get you a frequent flyer card. Yes.
Yes.
And Naomi, I, I'm sorry. I know that this is annoying you that you get asked this every time, but I know you have put your name on the record. The problem is that state law requires us to have you put your name every time you speak. So if you could state your name and city of residence, that would be helpful.
Yes, Naomi Flinders from Provo. I guess my comment is just questioning why BYU would be against this? Because what are you contributing to our community? You have wads of money. So if this helps the community, we're all connected. We're all using the roads. If these fees can help with public transportation, that's gonna help us. I don't quite understand this all the way, but to me, the more we can put into our public infrastructure and help each other, the better the whole community will be. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Naomi. Any, any other public comment? S- Sylvia and then Sharon.
Sylvia Andrew. Yeah, I, I just wanted to, uh, agree with this, the gentleman from BYU that it makes complete sense that the road should be a user fee, not a property fee. Because all kinds like Amazon drivers, like the point you made, that is a very intelligent point. So I just wanted to agree with him in that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sylvia. Sylvia is from Provo, by the way. Thank you.
Sharon Memmott, Provo. Um, I, I wanted to weigh in and say thank you for the user fee. And thank you for not exempting some of our, um, nonprofits. Thank you. As, as one of the people who lives in Provo and gets to pay the fee and also contributes to some of our nonprofits. So I know where they get the funds to help pay that fee. Um, I also do feel like Amazon does pay that fee. If, if you look at economics, they're just gonna raise the price, right? I'm, I'm paying Amazon to use the road by paying the road fee so that it's here so they can get to my house faster. So I appreciate that. I do agree with Mr. Davis. I have a concern about those administrative fees and how they're being applied and who decides what's reasonable. Why, why is the increase so much over the next three years? That would be my concern.
Thank you, Sharon. Other comments? If not, we'll close public comment and come back to the council for discussion. Councillor McKay?
Um, I wanna talk about the, oh, sorry, I twisted my neck. I just moved weird. I slept wrong last night, but, um, so back in two thousand fourteen, we did the first study for the transportation utility fee. And it came back in two thousand fourteen. That should be six dollars and something per home. Okay. So that was two thousand fourteen. That's what the study came back saying. The actual cost of the road, the trip generation is what it should be. And we cut it in half back then. And we've increased it barely at all. And now through two thousand twenty eight, we're gonna increase it to five dollars and something. So we are still below what the study said in two thousand fourteen, the number should be. So that's what I wanted, um, to be really clear about, just for perspective. Um, so and as far as the expenses that can be used, it's, we are required by law to do a study. So that Supreme Court case said that we have to do a transportation study before we implement the fee, right? That's where we got the price number. Now, we've never used the full price that we received from those studies. We've, we originally cut it in half. And now we're starting to go up. We're still gonna be under the price they suggested. But, so that is what the money would be used for, for that study that the Supreme Court requires us to do. And now that I've been in government and I, I, I'm on the Provo Housing Authority Board and work with HUD and Section Eight Housing and stuff like that, all government reports you're required to do, reports and studies and things, they do allow you to use your, your pricing from these government grants and fees and things to use towards studies. That's pretty standard in the government. So that's why we felt comfortable with it and our lawyers felt comfortable with it. But, um, I think that was it. Oh, and I'm also, I also think it's a very big deal that we all pay the fee in that we aren't subsidizing churches or BYU or other nonprofits.
Thank you, councillor McKay. Councillor Whipple?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a quick question for Vern. Um, so the income from this transportation utility fee, will this pay all of the cost of our road maintenance?
No, I won't come close to paying the entire fee for road maintenance. We do receive what is called B N C, which is county and city fu- funds, uh, through the U dot, um, through registration fees and whatnot that U dot distributes to cities and towns statewide.
So Mr. Davis's, um, premise that we would be having property owners pay all the cost for road maintenance through this is incorrect.
You're right.
Thank you.
And what about gasoline tax? Is there a portion of that that comes to roads as well?
So the gasoline tax and registration fees does go through the state of Utah, which is distributed back to us through the B N C road funds. And then there's the local tax, um, that the county has for corridor preservation as well as the fifth of the fifth for transit and other roadway projects. But those a lot of times are capital projects and not maintenance projects.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got another question. I'll just go down through Mr. Davis's list. Um, so who in the city benefits from having roads that are maintained?
Everyone.
Does BYU benefit from having the roads going to BYU maintained?
In my opinion, yes.
Um, so would hmm, no, I'm gonna stop with that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have some level of prudence, even though we're closing on nine o'clock.
Other council discussion? Okay. We'll call for a vote on the implied motion amending Provo City Code regarding use of transportation utility fee funds and amending the consolidated fee schedule. Councillor Hoban?
Yeah, wrong night to ask for fees, but I guess we can handle fifty cents. I'm not too unreasonable. Yes.
Councillor McKay?
Yes.
Councillor Whipple?
Yes.
Councillor Bogdan?
Yes.
Councillor Christensen?
Yes.
Councillor Garrett, yes. Councillor Handley?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes by a vote of seven zero. The final agenda item is number fourteen, an ordinance amending water fees on the Provo City Consolidated Fee Schedule. This will be presented by, we'll, we'll first turn the time to Gordon Hay, our Public Works Director.
I appreciate you guys hanging out so late tonight. I, um, I feel for Bill Pepperoni and you guys having to do this. So, um, kudo. Good job, everybody.
Well, and any residents who have stuck with us this long.
Too. I want to compliment those that are involved in civic engagement. So that is fantastic as well. So thank you. And as we've gone through this, uh, water rate, we've gone through a number of twists and turns through this process. And, and I think you'll remember when this first started, um, I came to the council and I said, I felt that this, uh, the infrastructure and the conservations could be met with, without doing a fee increase. Since that time, we've met as staff and we've worked through a process where we are bringing today for recommendation or for a consideration, five percent increase on a tiered, uh, water rate. Sit, um, tiered water rate program. The presentation is gonna be given to you by Keith. I know you wanted to see that again, and that's why you're here. I know this is the exciting part of the show. Um, after, uh, Keith gives his presentation, uh, with Bowen Collins, I should introduce that as well. Um, the mayor has a short statement she'd like to give after that. But again, I just wanted to reiterate, I still believe that there's an opportunity to meet the infrastructure goals and the conservation goals without a fee increase. So, um, I turn the time over to Keith.
Thank you, Mr. Hay.
So we had an opportunity to come a month ago and talk about rate increases. And there were some questions and some feedback. We took that back, uh, incorporated, uh, some of that, those comments and have come back to you, uh, with two significant updates. Uh, we talked about these in the work session two weeks ago. Uh, but for the benefit of the public, we'll, uh, run through these again. And we do have one little update on the slide that was requested. So, uh, when we came a month ago, the previous recommendation was lined out in the table, uh, shown here with twelve percent starting in twenty twenty five, uh, and then going forward is shown in the table. Since that time, there's been a couple of significant adjustments. Number one is we have updated to reflect, uh, potential income from developer contributions, which is shown as the purple at the top of this, uh, uh, chart. That's additional infrastructure that can be contributed to the city through developer contributions. Number two is, uh, the city staff went through with a fine tooth comb and looked at areas that they could make shifts. Number two is the city staff went through with a fine tooth comb and looked at areas that they could make shifts in operation and maintenance costs and basically identifying where those operation maintenance costs were most accurately assessed. And that resulted in for the water fund about a reduction of $1.1 million in on end cost. Last thing we did was we did take some feedback from the council to do a little bit of shift from the front end. And we wanted to accomplish the same level of investment in the system over the next 10 years, but maybe not have it hit so hard right at the beginning. And so we made that minor shift. There are some costs that are pushed off a couple of years. But the total investment in the system over the next 10 years remains the same. And so what that does is that results in an updated rate, recommended rate increase schedule beginning at 5% this year, holding that for a couple of years. We have a few years of higher increases until we settle into the long-term sustainable level of funding that was identified in, in our study. So the one other thing that we did was since that time, the legislature finalized House Bill 274, which provided some additional guidance on tiered rates. The three major requirements here are that water supplier rates are now required to incorporate increasing block units of water used, a tiered structure. That is, that was actually a requirement, but it was strengthened in House Bill 274. It requires water suppliers to consider water conservation when setting water rates. There's not a lot of definition what that means, but that is a requirement of the law now. And then last is that water rates must be based on generally accepted rate setting method, including a standard or method established by the American Waterworks Association. So our study follows AWWA Manual One principles. So complying with this requirement of the law. So with that said, there was a question of do these rates comply with the law? And the answer is yes, they follow all three steps of these. So with that in mind, looks like maybe a question or, no, okay.
It's the proposed rates, not our current existing rates.
Proposed rates. Thank you for the clarification. You're correct. Proposed rates do comply with this. So with that, we'll just return to what that would do. I've shown the previous recommendation at the 12% increase with an updated recommendation at 5%. The tiers, costs and the tier volumes, all those volumes are still the same as presented a month ago. We also had the commercial schedule, well, non-residential, that would include commercial, institutional, industrial. That is shown here. Same thing. We've updated the dollar values, but the tier breaks has not changed significantly. So the last thing to note is that we had this in our work session. We've updated it with some additional details. For three-quarter inch customers, we looked at a low user, average, high and very high users. And what their average monthly bill was, and you can see that first, that second column has the existing bill. What would happen if we kept the current structure, but added a 5% increase? And then also what would happen if we kept the 5% increase, but moved to a tiered structure? And so what you can see is the, the movement from the current structure to the tiered structure pushes a little more of the cost onto the high and the very high users, consistent with cost of service principles, and reduces the amount on those average and low users to a bit below the 5%. That's the content of my presentation. I don't know if you want to do questions or the mayor first.
Well, where you're here and you've reminded us of this data, Keith, let's see if there are any questions of clarifications that you'd like to ask Keith at this time. Counselor McKay?
It's been interesting, as I've been doing this last weekend, the, a lot of calculations for people. And I haven't gotten one calculation that's 5%. It's crazy. I get like, either the bill is lower or it's like 2.5% or it's like wicked high. And so I definitely have realized, and I don't know how to look at this correctly, but it's not a 5% increase. So I don't know how to, like, it's like I need a chart to see, from what I can see, most people are 5% or less, and then the top 10% are like crazy high. And so I, I feel like I need more information to know, because maybe it's just the, the people I'm looking at. But, because I just do the calculations for those who contact me and, and that I do it with. But the, like, I need to know, I don't think anyone should be less. So why is that happening that 10% have to cover everything? So I just need better understanding of how many are going to be, what percentage are paying less? What percentage are paying up to, you know, zero, one, or like above zero to 5%? And what percentage are paying these crazy high increases? Because I think it's just the tiers aren't, it should be like a, it should be like a general little, but it's like baboon. And I think that is punitive and just really harsh.
Catrice, what is crazy high?
Like 78%, 54%, 35%. You know, it gets so high and where other people are in the negative, like they're saving 20 bucks, they're saving 10 bucks, they're saving two. No one should be saving any, like, so that's the weird thing. I can't, like, if, if our, like, our, from what I've studied, our system infrastructure does need work. We do need a bit more for our infrastructure, fine. But it needs to be manageable and not huge spikes and not so aggressive on people with larger lots. And I also don't understand the theory that the largest lots are putting the most stress on the system. Okay, most of these larger lots are 50 plus years old. They are old lots. These people have been here a long time. They're not putting the stress on the system. It is all this new development and infill that is changing the picture, right? So I think it's unfair to put everything on, well, you have a larger lot, so you're harder on the system. Well, what about the thousands of multifamily we've put in? That, like, it just doesn't seem fair and it doesn't make sense to me. And you're telling me that these larger lots that have been there 20 years, 50 years, many of them had irrigation to begin with, and now they don't. And that they are, they're the problem and that they are the ones putting the higher, because if we hadn't built, we wouldn't need this higher level. And there wouldn't, so I don't know. I just, I have issues with those things.
So I, I guess, was there a specific question you want me to address or?
Just a comment, Catrice, or do you have a specific question for Keith?
I don't understand why you say it's a 5% increase.
So the revenue that the city receives increases by 5%? So in
Well, we've been told this whole time it's going to be a 5% increase. So that's completely different. Oh, I thought it was this whole time, a 5% increase on the rate. But you're saying we, we're implementing whatever, you know, some strategy all over the place to get a 5% increase.
5% increase in the revenue that the city receives from rates?
I did not understand that.
And when we make the shift to tiered rates, you're correct. There are some that will receive larger increases than other. I mean, in this chart, here's four users and each of them have a very different increase. And that is based on their pattern of use and the impact on the, on the system. I, I do think we provided in a previous work session, a detailed histogram of how different users were impacted. I don't have that today, but I could provide it if needed.
Other questions for Mr. Larson? Counselor Bogdan?
I know the answer to this, Keith, but I want you to answer it.
Sure.
Um, there's some confusion here about the size of pipes. So why? Can you go over the three-quarter inch? And normally, from what I understand, there are some anomalies there, but they're, they're mostly smaller lots, right? Three-quarter inch pipe. And then we have a different tiered rate system. So can you go through those tiers? And then the one inch are usually for the larger lots and they have a different tier. So they get different volumes of water, higher volumes of water from one-inch connection versus a three-quarter inch. The, the tiers are, the tiers are broken down differently.
Yeah, correct. So so whenever you do a tiered system, you have to take into account what the, what the lot size looks like. The goal here is not to penalize large lot sizes. The goal is for high water users, independent of lot size, to pay their fair share relative to impact on the system. Now, there's a number of different ways that we can look at how to represent different lot sizes. But the most accessible way and the easiest way to implement for your billing system and your, the, the people who are in charge of issuing the bills each month is to look at the meter size associated with the lot. And so three-quarter inch will generally be a much smaller lot than a one-inch, which is generally a much smaller lot than an inch and a half and so on and so forth. Those meters are sized based on the needs of the lot. So as you can see here, let's just take the tier three. A three-quarter inch will not pay that higher tier three cost until it exceeds 55,000 gallons. But a one-inch will not pay that higher cost until it exceeds 100,000 gallons, inch and a half, 250,000 gallons. So each of those different meter sizes receives a different amount based on the need associated with their property.
Thank you, Keith. And also the difference in the, the tiered rate versus it, it's just the simple math, right? I mean, we've been doing straight rates for such a long time. So your winter rates have been always really low because we've always been able to get that water through the springs, right? And the springs come and it's, we don't need very much pipe. We don't need very much storage. The springs are kind of clean, so we don't have to clean them as much. And so that dollar, what was it? A dollar 17 is what we currently charge. So that tier one, from what I understand, is necessity water, bath water, drinking water, cooking water, indoor water. And so that goes from 117 to a dollar 37, which is a 20 cent increase, right? Tier two is generally what we use outside, right? Whether it's a 50 or a three-quarter inch meter or a one-inch meter. It's, and so then we're dipping into our wells. And then we have to go to another water source. Our pipes are bigger. And that, that rate was what? A dollar 93? And now it's going up to 209.
Correct.
So that's a difference of 16 cents. So it's really not that big of a jump. And so where we're seeing a lot of the lower bills is now instead of getting that $2 charge all throughout the summer, now you're getting 10,000 gallons or 15,000 gallons at a lower rate. And you're getting the rest of it at a higher rate. And so when you balance that out, that's why you're seeing some people getting a, and, and it doesn't matter what the increase is, it's just the natural of shifting to a tiered rate that's going to cause that. And then from what I understood, that second tier in the summer rates cut off at 100,000, right? And so that was
For the one inch.
Yeah, for the one inch. And so that tier three, so that was what? Two, two, 214? And now it's going up to 364. So that's where we're seeing our biggest increase, the dollar 50. And then in that tier three, you cut it off so that 10% of the water users are there. And out of those 10%, half of them only reach into tier three by under 10,000 gallons for one month out of the year. The other higher 5% of water users. And it doesn't matter what lot size, because you have some that are smaller lot sizes and some that are bigger lot sizes that are in that, you know, and you even have one acre ones that are down in the two, they never hit the three. They're up there in those, that tier three and that top 5% is there for multiple months. Am I correct with all this?
Yeah, when you say multiple, most of them are two or three months.
Because it's summertime.
All year round. It's just a, a sharp peak in the summer months.
Okay. And usually that's people that are using mostly high, high volume users.
Right. That's the goal.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Bogdan. Thank you, Keith. Mayor Cafusi?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Another question for you, Keith, from Counselor.
I was just patiently waiting. So if I look at surrounding cities, you've got cities that have eight tiers, six tiers, four tiers, five tiers. I think that that takes lot size much more into consideration when you talk about the summer months. Because I have a rental property on the west side that is an eighth of an, seventh of an acre lot size. So it's, I think, 6,000 square feet or 5,500 square feet, something like that. It's one of the newer homes. Nothing special about the water system we have. It's just a typical, you know, rain bird system there. We can program it. But it barely scrapes into tier two in the summer because it's just so small. I mean, that lot is mostly house. House is 3,600 square feet lot size. You know, the lot is 5,500, right? Right. So that house is then in the same tier as somebody I met with today who has almost an acre. They're both on three-quarter. So you have somebody that almost has an acre being held to the same standard as me in the rental property, which I used to live in, by the way. That they're, they're held to the same standard. That just seems so wrong to me that she's supposed to use the same amount of gallons or be held to the same standard as somebody on, say, a seventh of an acre. How come we didn't do, you didn't recommend more tiers then?
I don't, I don't think you mean more tiers. I think you mean more size classifications.
Well, they're both on three-quarter of an acre, but they're both held to 55,000 gallons before they hit the tier three, three-quarter inch, sorry. They're both on three-quarter inch.
Right.
And so they both get penal, get hit when they hit 55,000 gallons. Tier three kicks in, which is then 74% more per gallon. So somebody on a, on an almost an acre is typically going to use eight times the amount of water as somebody on an eighth of an acre just to water their property, but they're held to the same standards. How come we didn't offer different tier breaks? So you would have to do additional tiers or, or up the tiers significantly to cover everybody within that three-quarter of an acre that would typically be watering their lawn a typical amount, right?
Yeah.
So, meaning if somebody has an eighth of an acre and somebody has an acre and they're both three-quarter, that tier two, if you're going to make them all the same, it's got to cover everybody use, because as you stated, Becky, it's for outside use, right? So it doesn't, but it's not covering everyone that is watering their lawn a reasonable amount, right? I'm not saying it should cover people that are outside of the norm, but anybody who's just in, within a reasonable range should be covered.
So, so I guess I understand what you're saying. Normally, though, what you would do is if you're concerned about that, you would add additional size bins and you'd create that. The number of steps, the number of tiers. We could have increased the tiers, the tier volumes, but what that would have done is it would have pushed the cost up for, let's just say you take tier two and you make it, instead of 55, you make it
100, 100,000 gallons. Yeah.
Yeah. So now instead of 209, it's got to go to 245 to get the same amount of revenue. So you're
But instead what you've done is then to Catrice's point, you've then made it so that some people are paying less. So we're, we're generating 5% more revenue, but it's placed on the backs of a smaller group, the group that has larger lots. As opposed to, I, basically what you're saying is you couldn't generate the revenue you wanted to generate if you did, did it in a more fair way. That's how I'm hearing it, right?
I wouldn't say a more fair way. I would say the reason that this has shifted is because we've removed the subsidy that historically those large water users have had and the small users have been paying and we've
We, we argued about that last time.
Yeah.
And, and what you said was that eight, eight, eighth of an acre lots will use about the same water as an acre lot. And so And so my point is it's no subsidy. They're using the same amount of water, not on a per household basis, because you got eight households as opposed to one. But on a per acre basis, there's no subsidy there. They're using about the same amount of water.
Yeah, I think, I think you and I.
In in fact, the person I met with today is using much less water than a lot of people with a significantly smaller lot than her. So she should get a break on her per gallon. She should actually be paid, charged less, but she's not because they're lots so much larger.
Um, and we've had, we've had the discussion too, that there could be more of these breaks if you wanted to do that. Um, we've tried to find a nice balance between uh administration equity uh to cover ninety five percent of your customers. Um, and that's where we've landed.
Right, and then the other five percent go up hundreds of dollars sometimes in a month. And that is not, that just, I don't understand how you can look at that and say that's a fair system. When you have some people who are bearing a significant burden so that other people can actually pay less. How is that fair?
Again, we're removing the subsidy that has existed.
Subsidy, it's a relative term, I guess.
Uh. And I think we just disagree on this and so. Yeah, I appreciate that. You, you're the council member, you get to make your point. I'm just trying to answer the question.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Keith. Any, any other questions for Mr. Larson? Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Thanks.
Mayor Kafusi.
Thank you so much. I just want to start by saying the past two weeks have been amazing. I have never had so much citizen outreach and I have loved it. I have read every email. I have answered every phone call. I have called back every voice message. I've met with you on my front porch. I've met with you in my living room. I've talked to you at Macy's grocery store and I have loved it. So thank you. Um, I would like to go ahead and read a statement. So Council Chair Garrick, Vice Chair Whipple and Council members. I'd like to express my sincere gratitude to everyone who has contributed to analyzing Provo's water rates. Your dedication reflects the care we all have for the future of our great city. It is important to underscore that the responsibility for setting water rates lies appropriately with our city council. And I have great respect for that process. With the council's goals in mind, the Public Works Department has worked tirelessly to develop a comprehensive approach that addresses every aspect of our water system from infrastructure improvements to long-term conservation. Water is fun, is foundational to every thriving community. It sustains our homes, drives responsible growth and safeguards our natural surroundings. The way we manage and invest in this critical resource will shape not only how we live today, but the kind of city we live for for future generations. And we've made meaningful progress since the initial fifteen percent rate increase was proposed in the water rate study. I strongly support a thoughtful, transparent process grounded in citizen engagement to meet our infrastructure and conservation goals. But we cannot ignore the real economic uncertainty many of our residents are facing. I've listened carefully to their concerns and just as importantly to their thoughtful and innovative ideas. I am actively exploring creative solutions that reflect citizen and department input, including Director Gordon Hates' initial recommendation in early twenty twenty four and his final recommendation early in this presentation to not raise rates. Therefore, I respectfully ask the city council to allow me the opportunity to fully vet some alternatives and to present to you a proposed water rate and tier approach in two weeks as part of my budget presentation. For clarity, I would like to present my thoughts and revised water rate and tier proposal for your consideration alongside the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six tentative budget on May sixth. I understand and respect that this is your meeting and you are free to vote on the current proposals tonight. But I thank you for considering my request.
Thank you, Mayor Kafusi. This item was also noticed for public comment, so would like to invite those who have come to uh share their thoughts with us. We'll open public comment at this time and if any would like to um speak to the issue, please come to the podium. Um, state your name, city of residence and we're sorry that we can only allow two minutes per comment, but trust that you'll be able to help us with that.
My name is Mark Sutcher. I've been a longtime city resident of Provo for about thirty eight years. I've owned a home in Provo for twelve years. Um, it kills me that over the last ten years, I've constantly heard that we are one of the most well-managed cities in the nation. And yet we find ourselves in a point where we're talking about raising water rates for some customers, seventy, eighty, ninety percent. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilwoman, for defending the people who live in Provo. If you want to talk about real water users, you talk about the high density housing that we're putting in. I look at my bill. I have a family of five. We use about ten thousand gallons of water most of the year. Summertime, it goes up like this because we start watering lawns, taking care of our yard and everything else. But now we have all these high density housing. We stick eight lots in the price of one house. Well, they're using eighty thousand gallons of water, but we're going to keep them at the exact same tier rate. It's ridiculous. If we want to really truly think about how Provo City mandates people with larger lots have to have a certain amount of green space on their lots. They're not allowed to do zero scapeing. If they do do zero scapeing, it is under stringent uh certifications or whatever you want to say. I'm also part of a small business in the city of Provo. We have two different offices in Provo. We just did one and we lost half of our parking lot to green space. If we're talking about conserving water, let's conserve water and let people use it intelligently, let them use their yards intelligently, do some zero scape. Let businesses pave a parking lot, not put ninety five trees in a parking lot. Let's do things a little bit smarter and not penalize people who have lots in Provo.
Thank you, Mark.
I'm John Benyon and I live in Provo and I'm a a member of the Board of Conserv Utah Valley. We at you, we at Conserv Utah Valley urge the city council to follow the recommendations of the expert study the city commissioned. Increase the expenditure on replacement of water mains with funds coming from a three-tiered fee schedule. The proposed proposed system will equitably align increased fees to those who need to use the water and burden the ancient water mains the most and the least cost to those who use less water. This will encourage everyone to conserve. House Bill two seventy four holds communities, communities accountable for water conservation when setting water prices. CUV supports this change because it will promote conservation of water and provide funding for replacing water infrastructure without increased fees appreciably for most water users. I prepared that before, but I have heard nothing that um would change my mind uh wi- wi- uh about this new schedule. It um, if if someone is is using too much water, it will penalize them for it. And it's based on both the pipe size and their water use and and I, that seems very equitable. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you, John.
Hello, my name is Derek Bruton, a Provo resident. I professionally am a water supply planning engineer working at the regional scale around here. I'm not in that role right now. I'm one of Councilor Whipple's uh troublesome constituents. Uh, I live in a hundred and fourteen year old bungalow on uh thirty east and first south. So I know the stress that impending investment in deferred maintenance causes. Looking at the water master plan Provo prepared in twenty twenty four, the city is facing in the next twenty five years somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and thirty three million in water infrastructure investment. And using a metric that was developed earlier this meeting, did a quick calculation, that's enough to pay a B city due dues for four hundred and sixty six thousand years. So I appreciate the serious thought that council, uh, city staff, the, all of our elected officials and the public has taken in this because this is real. This is important and this matters for our residents' day in the future. And also I do appreciate it's therapeutic that we get to be here and voice our opinions, unlike when eggs or gasoline spike up and we can only complain. And so all of that comes down to that, while I'm not thrilled by the need to be responsible, I support that the city is going to take a serious and a real uh long-term view in doing what's right for our citizens. Doing what's right, that's whoever lives in at my current address in fifty years, which I hope and am planning is still me if I'm above the ground or a hundred years, that they still have clean, reliable and affordably priced water. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Derek.
My name is Lisa Rivera and I am a Provo resident as well. Um, I just would like to express, um, I understand that there's a need for for increasing rates and and that's just life, right? Um, but I do think that we just need to think through the tiers a little bit more. Um, I, it's really discouraging to think that my family, I have about a quarter of an acre. Um, but there's landscaping, there's trees, there's grass, and we really do try to conserve. But that's what makes Utah beautiful is when we do this landscaping. And I don't think that if we're trying to encourage um conservation, that that this tier system encourages that. I think it discourages gardening. I think it um penalizes um families that have not even really large lots. Just it could be just a lot with some reasonable landscaping on it. Um, families that have a lot of children that just take a lot of baths and just have a lot of dishes to wash and lots of clothes to wash. Um, and so it saddens me to think that there will be families who already are struggling to get by to see such significant increases in their water costs. I mean, that there's huge that um, a small portion of people. And we can say it's a small portion, but those are real families and real people trying to buy groceries and trying to pay for children's school sports that are significantly expensive. So I just think it needs more time for us to figure out, how can we make sure that all of Provo's residents are contributing to make make up the difference that we need to make up and have the money that we need to. Um, specifically, some of those in the high density housing. It it is not fair and I hate it when my kids say that to me, that it's not fair. But we have to try to find a way to make sure that everybody is contributing to this.
Thank you, Lisa.
Dave Lewis, Provo. Um, I do think I I agree that we need to be proactive. And I understand we've got some old water lines and we need to look forward and say, what do we do so we don't have problems in the future? So I agree. I appreciate Travis raising the alarm and saying, this is raising, raising the price of the rates more than it should. And I appreciate Michelle asking for a couple of weeks to include it in her budget. So thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dave.
Sylvia Andrew, Provost. So I, I came to this meeting because of Travis's post on Facebook. And so I'm like, oh my gosh, it's going up like, uh, he said tier three going up seventy four percent. Tier one, only fifty three percent. That, I mean, wow, that is huge. So please do not raise our water rates like that. I I appreciate uh Mayor Kafusi coming to our defense and, you know, let's be reasonable here. Anyway, that's my comments. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you, Sylvia.
Um, my name is Joanne Ellsworth. I live in Provo. I have um a little over an acre agriculturally zoned lot that two years ago, huge property taxes wound up. And then we got over a year ago, the tier thing. I also am trying to make my property better and not just have dry dead weeds. So I'm watering, I have a big garden. I'm also happen to be a swimming teacher for over forty years and I have an above ground pool I put up in the summer and save lives by teaching people how to swim. So I'm probably one of those high tiered people. It makes me feel like Provo says, we don't want agricultural zoned people anymore. We only want high density houses. So I could sell my property and have five houses there instead, or maybe thirty, depending on how many I want. How sad is that? Do we not want agricultural anymore? Do we want, not want that? And that's my fear and frustration. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Ted Tronsen, sorry, very loud. Ted Tronsen, Provo. Um, I was the neighborhood chair for many, many years in Provo. Um, I live up in the Grandview area. I've lived there for about twenty five years. Um, I also went to BYU many, many years ago, so I've been in student housing, done all of those different things that have, uh, you know, made it fun and exciting. Um, I live in an HOA at this point, most of us fifty five years and older. I think I'm like the youngest. So I get volunteered to do all the fun projects. We've got a pool. And guess what? When they built the HOA, what did Provo City want? Lots of grass, lots of trees, wide mo strips, lots of trees, right? Let's just go down the list, right? We want to make this green city, you know, tree city, whatever, right? So that was the plan back then. And along with that, we have a lot of water usage, right? Um, we got a lot of green space. So the rates going up is going to have a big effect on that. I'm glad we clarified some of the pipe sizes because I was kind of frustrated about how all that was being figured out because just because I have a bigger meter, why am I getting billed more for the base, right? That's and why are you going to charge me a bunch more for the water usage? Because water is basically cheap, right? We get it from the springs and yeah, we have a couple of wells, but it's cheap. The biggest cost is the infrastructure, right? The pipes, the pipes are what cost the money. Whether I have a straw or a two foot pipe coming out of those wells or springs, the biggest cost is constructing and rerunning all of that, right? The pipes cheat. Let's be honest, the pipes cheat. So what do we do? How do we go forward? Why is tiered rates even on the docket? Why don't we try to maybe go towards a bond or something where we can actually prove what's being done?
Thank you, Ted, and thank you for your service as neighborhood chair years ago.
Hi, my name is Tina Carter and I can't believe it, but I've been in Provo for twenty years now, actually longer. So I love living in Provo and Becky has taught me something and that's to ask questions. And so this is one of my questions that I have. And I've I've learned a lot from Travis Holman and his Facebook post. One thing that I thought was really interesting, and I need to put my glasses because I'm getting old. So um, Orem's tier two is a dollar five per gallon, I'm guessing. And Provo at its, the rate that's being proposed is two oh nine. So this is just an example of tier two, right? So why is it that we're already so much more than Orem when our water from tier two is coming from wells? That doesn't need to be treated, but Orem gets their water from the Provo River and it needs to be treated. So right there, it costs Orem more water, more money to provide the water to their residents. So have you guys talked to Orem to see maybe what they suggest of how they are able to have such amazing rates in the first place? I'm just curious, this dramatic difference immediately. Um, the other thing that I worry about is like the mayor mentioned transparency. I just worry that there are so many people in Provo that do not know that this is happening. Like even tonight, I was texting my friends. I have a friend who is a very financially um not doing very well. And the thought of her water rates going up is very stressful. Have, and have you really considered this few amount of people? So my friend actually won't qualify, but the this, this tier three people, have you looked at who they are? Can they truly afford this? It it sounds to me that we're calling them like the heavy horrible water users. I don't know if that's really the case. I think this needs to be reevaluated. People in Provo need to know what's happening before you make a decision so they can tell you what they want.
Thank you, Tina.
Hi, my name is Joseph Billings. I live here in Provo. I went, attended the District One meeting last week where the Public Works Director spoke.
I went, attended the District One meeting last week where the Public Works Director spoke a little bit on this topic as well. He was asked about the condition of the infrastructure. And while it sounded, you know, I could be misunderstanding things. He said that we have a lot of old pipes. We're a pretty old city. We need to replace them. Completely agree. But ounce of prevention worth a pound of cure. Um, but overall I got the sense we're in good shape. We asked, are we behind the eight ball on this? Are you limited on what you can replace based on your budget? I got the impression that was not the case. He said that we had been, you know, we, we all know we're in a 20-year-plus drought. He said our springs are still going, are still flowing well, that our wells have just started moving barely. So it seems like we're in a good position, both in infrastructure and water-wise. At least that's the impression I got. Perhaps I'm wrong. But if we are, why over the next 10 years is the city looking for 74% more revenue from water? Cause on the, on the chart it showed you're expecting a 3% um, inflation rate. And when asked, it seemed like that was the, the director's main concern was just inflation. Costs are going up, so we need to raise some rates. Um, so I'm just asking, why is, why is the rate increase so high? If we're doing pretty well? And then the, the tiered structure, you know, I, I agree with several of the councillors here, but just, it just seems draconian. Almost that it's, you know, if, that it's a person on a half-acre lot can use the same amount of water as three, 6,000-acre lots, but the one person pays more, even though overall they're using the same amount of water. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Joseph. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Amanda Purnell. I live in Provo. I look like I do because I spent most of the day in the garden with my kids. And I, I just want you to look behind you. What does it say? Provo, welcome home. I've lived here for 10 years, went to BYU. I cannot afford to buy a house. No shock. Um, my husband works for BYU, good full-time job. Still can't afford it. I don't want to tell my three-year-old and my six-year-old and my baby that they can't play in the sprinklers. Like, is this home? Are we welcoming home? Like, I don't want to live in the desert. I know, I know. I, I have to live in the desert because BYU is here, right? But, um, I don't understand. Maybe, maybe it's just me. Uh, my landlord, way before they built, built the house, it was added on to. It was built in the twenties and it was added on to, and now there's a duplex like above us. And we have a three-quarter inch pipe and I don't, I guess maybe I don't understand why we're getting charged. Like, would a typical duplex have a one-inch pipe? Or is it just three-quarter inch for everybody? Um, but we're not a single-family home, we're a duplex and we're going to get charged out the wazoo. And I'm going to be totally transparent because I want you to be transparent with me. I don't pay my water bill. My landlord pays my water bill. But I'm going to feel that increase. If the water bill goes up, she's either going to raise the rent or she's going to tell me I have to pay the water bill. One or the other. She's not gonna, she's not gonna pay it, you know? So, um, yeah, I'd just like a little more transparency, maybe like why we have a three-quarter inch? Can we switch it to a one-inch? Like, maybe that's a stupid question, but like, can I just, hey landlord, you'll save money if you switch it out, right? So anyways, just a little help understanding maybe why that is like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Any other comments? Sharon?
Thank you for hanging out. Thank you for this discussion. Thank you for the clarification about the 5% because I was understanding it the way you were understanding.
Sorry, Sharon, a name in.
Sorry, Sharon Memmott. One more time in Provo. Um, also my question would be, are, are winter and summer rates going away? If we're going from 117 and 128 respectively, winter, summer rates to 137, I don't understand how anybody's bill is going down. Um, so I'm kind of okay with that much. Um, if the goals can be met, as Mr. Haight said, without the increase, why the extra additional increases on each tier? Why do they seem so dramatic? Um, I'd appreciate an additional one and a half and two and a half tiers so that, so that those don't jump so much. And I'd be curious to see what revenue we could bring from that. I also would suggest that each of those tiers don't go up by more than, say, 5%. Again, because if we can bring this in, what we need without it, with that, without that dramatic increase. I'd love to see the mayor's idea side by side with this for the next couple of weeks so that we can see what revenue would be generated and how it would affect different people. Different size yards and waters amounts. Is there a route for those with an agricultural zone to receive an exemption? I appreciate mostly, as I've watched this discussion progress, doing it the way that I understand the current proposal stated that while you have a projected plan for each of the next several years, that each future council will have to vote on this each year. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Any other public comment? Thank you. Thanks to all of you for staying so long and sharing your comments and thoughts with us. We'll close public comment at this time then and bring the item back to council for discussion. Yes, councillor Whipple.
We are here tonight because I have taken public work seriously. They have told us, and we have voted on and agreed, that we have, what, an $80 million shortfall? In the repair and maintenance of these pipes that provide water to us. The reason that we've got the shortfall is because even though we've been doing regular increases every year, inflation is going up. The cost of the materials that we're doing to replace these pipes, these, uh, to quote Napoleon Dynamite, decruded pieces of crap, to replace them is increasing every year. And the standards by which we're replacing them has also gotten better. So that when we put them in now, they will last longer than these ones were when they were placed in there. We have gotten this presentation on water rates and tiers on August 1st of 2023, September 5th, April 16th, April 30th, October 15th, November 5th, January 28th, February 11th and April 22nd. We've already had nine public meetings about this. Nine public meetings in which we were told that we need to increase the water rates and that we should do tiers so that the burden of the increased rates would, would be distributed in such a way that everyone would have access to the water that they need for their household, for their living with modest increases. Once you get into the summer and then those who are using the very most, who caused the water to cost more for all of us in the summer, they are bearing the burden of that. When we were taking this very, very seriously in February, it seemed that the mayor's office respectfully was surprised that the council was actually considering a 12% increase. And they'd started, they were shocked. They, they started getting public comment on this and asked for time to reconsider, to kind of walk back this increase because I'm assuming there, you got what we got, a lot of public pushback on the idea of a, on the idea of a 12% increase. And so we said, yeah, take some time to look at it. And come back to us, bring it back to leadership in like two weeks and we'll go over it with you and then we'll take it to the council. They didn't come back in two weeks. It was almost two months before it came back to us. And there was significant pushback on that. And what we got was the proposal that we have now. Instead of a 12% increase this next year, a 5% increase. Even that really made me uncomfortable because I take this seriously. I believe that the numbers that we were given were good. Am I hiding behind this now? Here, I'll move it.
Where, where'd you get that, Rachel?
I have a friend with some pipes.
It didn't come out of your front yard?
No, not this one. Um, I'm going to be replacing pipes in my yard and they're going to probably look worse than this. So, I believe that the original proposal that we were given was the most responsible way that we could address the need to replace this infrastructure. The revised one that we've been given takes into account the extra funds that we've gotten. And that's really good because so far our city has been excellent at leveraging other funds and projects to be able to do work. Um, and I think there is a reasonable expectation that we'll be able to continue to do that. Probably not at the same level as the last year or two, but hope exists. Which is why, e- even though it's like, even though you like had like a rich uncle die and give you money and then another one died the next year, like, I don't know how many rich uncles we have. So, it's, it's good, but it has this level of kind of speculation to it that makes me a little bit anxious. That said, the, the new proposal that they gave us with the 5% that takes that into account, I was willing to go along with that because we would be looking at it every year. They would be adjusting their numbers and saying, yep, we got in this money. We are good. We are still on track to be able to replace all of these. Um, and it's possible that some years we would get more and so then we wouldn't have to increase 7%. We could just do 4%, right? And I liked the idea of that flexibility with the understanding that would probably be necessary to increase, you know, these very modest amounts every year because the price of replacing these is not going down. Pipe is not getting cheaper. And we were just looking at standard inflation. We're not looking at tariffs on steel from China, which will 100% impact these and the cost of these projects. So, I, I understand that there is significant political, I think my hands are covered in rust now, that there's significant political pressure on us to do nothing. To say, no, we're just not going to do that. We will have wasted all of the time in all of these nine meetings. We will be saying, no, really, we just don't actually need to ask you to spend the money. I think having been asked to do something hard and responsible for my community, to say, yeah, we do need to spend this and then say, never mind. I don't know what to do with that. I don't know what to do with that because already there have been two months to come back with the revised proposal. I don't know how we replace this if the prices are going up and we don't come up with the money to pay for it. And we've been talking so much as a council that people who are using services need to pay enough to pay for those services. That's one of our fundamental principles that's guided this council for the last few years. And under the cost of service model, with the way our system works, when we are exceeding certain water capacities in the summer, super-high volumes that are being used, every one of those gallons that's above the normal cost more than the other gallons below it. So the tiers are actually taking into account the fact that one gallon of water can cost more than another gallon of water on a summer day when we're all using it. And the ones who are using the most are the reason that that water costs more. Our city has been doing a really good job on maintaining our infrastructure and our water delivery service. And they have very responsibly looked at this and said, if we want to keep this level of service with the increasing of prices and with the increasing age of these pipes, we are going to have to spend more money. And because we want you to continue to have this good, reliable water service, we're asking you now to do these modest increases so that we can continue to give it to you. Because if we do not have this regular and aggressive replacement of those old pipes, they will fail. And when they fail, the emergency response to repair those costs far more than a planned replacement. It's far more disruptive than a planned replacement. Um, if the water goes out unexpectedly, you have no notice of it and it is out until they manage to get it in. And they'll patch it back in as quickly as they can, but then they have to come back a couple more times. You have significant disruption as opposed to a planned notice where you get it a few weeks in advance. By the way, your water is going to be out for these days so that you can plan around it. By not doing an increase, we are denying our citizens that kind of predictability and reliability in the system. I do not want us to start experiencing more failures. And the current rate of funding will not let us keep up with the increasing cost of materials and labor needed to do the repair and replacement. I'm really, really grateful that this administration has looked carefully at other funding options. Um, I am frustrated that they did not start looking at this in the fall of last year when we were doing this, that it took eight, seven, eight meetings before they said, oh, wait a minute. We don't like the numbers that our own department is presenting to you. We don't actually want you to use their numbers. I, I would have, I think it would have been productive if there had been earlier engagement on that. Because then we wouldn't have been talking about 12% for a year and coming here and now balking at 5%. For the comments that we've gotten tonight, I will say that there's a difference between lot size and water use. I recognize that many of our, I don't, should we call them legacy lots? People who've had large lots for a long time have become accustomed to cheap water on that, or they've converted over from, from irrigation, from flood irrigation system into this. Although I will say that if you converted from that system, you had some sort of renumeration for that. If you switched over from a canal company to the culinary water system, it's because you chose not to continue with the canal company or pay for the repairs to continue to deliver water under those services. So you are in this culinary water system now and it has certain costs that have to be paid for. And even though you had cheap water for a long time, conditions around all of us have changed and we all have to address the changing conditions in which we find ourselves. That's the only constant that we have in life is that things continue to change around us. And how well and how graciously we adapt to those changes, how we make decisions based on them that are responsible, not just for ourselves now, but for our future generations. That's, that's something that we all have to deal with. Another note is that there are more and less efficient uses of landscaping and water. Um, if you have a large garden in which you've set up a good drip irrigation system, you're actually using less water to produce produce than you would be to take care of Kentucky bluegrass. Just because you have a large lot doesn't mean that you have to be one of the large water users. And we've already established in previous meetings that with the tiers, you can sign up to get notifications if you are going to be jumping from one tier to another. So that you can say, oh, I'm getting kind of, kind of high for this billing cycle. If I lay off for this next week, then I'm not going to bump up into tier three and then I can water again next week after my billing cycle turns over. There are tools that we have at our disposal so that we can responsibly monitor our that we have at our disposal so that we can responsibly monitor our water usage, so that we can implement conservation efforts, which is now part of our state law, so that if you are currently in what would be this 10%, you can take strong and effective action to mitigate that, so that you're not in the 10% anymore. I, I apologize for speaking so passionately. I was completely surprised by Mr. Haight's statement that we could possibly do this without a water increase, or without a rate increase, and completely surprised by the mayor's statement. I find those statements not to be hopeful and encouraging, but disheartening. Because it feels like it undermines the hard work that we have been doing, and it diminishes our, our willingness to make these hard, responsible decisions for you. I don't want to kick the can down the road. And that's what I'm being asked to do. And I've seen how that has hurt the city in the past. Well, we've seen dramatic increases in rates for other infrastructure because with political pressure, past councils, past administrations have refused to make the necessary prudent rate increases when it could have been less harmful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Whipple. Others? Councilor Handley?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of speechless, to be honest. I feel very misled about what the problem was. Because I've taken these reports very seriously for the last two years. I'll just say what I feel about this, and I'll say it as quickly as I can. I take it very seriously that every study I've looked at, and what we heard from our consultant, is that if we do not raise the revenue that we need right now as a city, it will end up costing us at least 60% more as a city to proceed as we have. So it is the fiscally irresponsible thing to do, not to raise the rates at this point. No one, up to this point anyway, has given us alternatives to what is being proposed that helps us understand how we can raise those rates, raise the revenue, excuse me, that we need, and in the time that we need it. If we don't raise revenue this year, we only have to raise it more in future years, which is the very definition of kicking the can down the road. I haven't heard enough about why conservation matters. And the fact is, this valley gets 15 inches of rain a year. We live in a semi-arid desert, and it requires 30 inches a year to grow Kentucky bluegrass. So it's not a sustainable practice for us to have built our environment around cheap water when water is simply an endangered resource. More people are going to live in this valley in the next 20 years. It's, we're going to have the size of Salt Lake Valley by 2050. And we have an endangered water source. We have decreasing snowpack, and the, so we just have to do the math on that and recognize that as we continue to grow, we have to be more careful about water resources. The law that the state has passed requires us to be consistent with AWWA standards. We must have meaningful tiers that adequately account for impact to the system and contribute to water conservation. That was stated very clearly. And I'm sorry, but I, you know, Mr. Hoben and I have been companions on this council for six years, and we've been allies many, many times. But he calls it a philosophical difference, but I cannot find any factual information that confirms his claim that higher density is what is actually being subsidized by raising rates on larger, heavier water users. It's simply factually not true. It's not the industry understanding that higher density is not more expensive on our infrastructure. We, we received a white paper from some experts here in our, at the University of Utah and at Brigham Young University that pointed out that infrastructure is 20 times more piping required for, to bring the same amount of water to the equivalent number of, sorry, not the same amount of water, but to bring water to the equivalent number of people in a high-density neighborhood as those who live in sprawl. That's what I understand Keith meant when he said, consistent with cost of service principles. It simply cannot be argued that heavier water users are not more impactful on the system per gallon. Higher users have, in fact, been subsidizing lower users for decades. And I have yet to see actual calculations of what that means. But if, if I was doing back-of-the-napkin calculations, just to, to give me some idea, if, if the average low, lower user, the lower 50% of the, of the city of Provo were paying $5 more per month on their water bill to subsidize higher users, that ends up being in the tens of millions of dollars over 20 years that lower users have been subsidizing higher users. So I think that has to be taken into account of. And I don't know why that is not penetrated our community more than it needs to. Because that is a real problem. That's a problem of equity that I think tiered systems, as so strongly recommended by all the, all the people who are in this industry, understand is the best way to accurately account for cost of service. And if we flatten the rates, there is a point at which they no longer serve the purpose for which they are designed. So I, I don't know exactly where that, where that drop-off is, but we've already flattened the rates more than had been originally proposed. If we want more tiers, that's not good news for the highest users. If you use over $100,000, $100,000 gallons in a month, or 120,000 gallons, you're going to be paying even more than what is, what is required at this point. That's the only way to do a multiple tiers, to spread, spread out that cost. So it means raising the rates at the highest level even, even more. But if we flatten it, it means that we have to raise the rates higher later. And I'll just simply end on the, the idea that Councilor Whipple already mentioned, is that there, there is a gardening exception, and there are ways to grow produce and have agricultural uses other than, than alfalfa, that are useful and more water-wise than, than Kentucky bluegrass. So I'm, I'm in favor of what's been proposed. I don't, I don't understand the, the argument that we haven't been transparent. I think we've been very transparent about this. I think there's been a lot of misunderstanding. But I think if, if we could have done a better job, I suppose there should have been more communication into the public than, 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 than we've had. But that's been the struggle of, in the eight years I've been on the city council, with trying to help saturate the community with the information of the things we're trying to deal with. But I feel very strongly that we should move forward with the proposed rates.
Thank you, Councilor Handley. Others? Councilor Hoben?
I think people feel that there's not transparency, because when you say there's a gardening exception, and there flat out is no gardening exception, George, people start to just, start to distrust us. There's an urban farming exception, and here's what it says. Water Resource Director can make exceptions for urban farming. And guess what? We have no criteria around that. There was some criteria submitted. Make some, and then approve something. Why are we approving it today without this criteria? And to say that there's an urban farm, or there's a garden exception, I'm sorry, but what was presented was that a quarter of your lot has to be covered, a quarter, sorry, a quarter of the land portion of your lot needs to be garden. In the case of my lot, that's 6,000 square feet. That's not a garden. That's a freaking small farm. So I, I think people are, are tired of us trying to say that this is a 5% increase when really, it's, for me, it's a 38% increase. There are people being significantly impacted by this. It's going to crush some people's budgets, simply because they have larger lots. So I'm not going to comment on every comment that I heard, because I want people to be able to go home. But how this is being presented is not reality for a lot of people. And that is the issue. That is why people don't feel that there's transparency, and there's not trust. And that's why people are upset. I did want to correct something, Sylvia. I'm sorry if I misled you. Tier one is not a, or the tiers aren't, that's not how much the tiers are going up. It's the difference between tier one and tier two, tier two and tier three. Just wanted to be clear on that. Still significant in my mind, but just, the comment by Conserv Utah Valley is, people who use too much water will pay more. I'm sorry, but you don't get to be the moral police on when my water is too much. It's like George's comment that, you don't, you don't get to. It's like George's comment that, on Facebook, that somehow somebody with a large lot is like an empty church parking lot not being used all year. My grass is used a lot by our family, and I have a right to have grass. So for you to come in and be the moral police and say that my water usage is not right, is not, is too much and not appropriate, or is like a wasted parking lot, it's just wrong, guys. And that's why I say it's a philosophical difference. I really wasn't going to make all these comments, but you kind of poked the bear, guys. Sorry. So now I get my, I get my time. There was a comment that just because you're, have a large lot, doesn't mean you have to be a high user. I'm sorry, but that comes across as incredibly naive. When somebody uses, say, 150,000 gallons, because they have an acre, explain to me how you're going to just stop watering and not use 50,000 gallons that put you over tier two. I don't know how you're going to just flip a switch and just all of a sudden not use a third of your water. It just comes across as incredibly naive. It really does. Because, I'm sorry, but I use as much water as you do on a per-acre basis in the peak of summer. I do. I have a larger lot, but my usage is just as efficient as yours. Yet somehow, I'm the one who's doing something wrong, simply because I have a larger lot. What am I going to do? Just give away half my property? What am I going to do to, to, like you said, just, once I get to that, close to tier three, just go ahead and stop using water? It just, it's, guys, it doesn't make sense. And I don't know, I have clearly failed to communicate this, to still have some of these comments that are being made. It's just, it's just, it's crazy to me how I somehow have failed. We don't have an exception put in place for urban farming. I think that that's something that the council asked for two weeks ago, and that that should be delivered before we vote. Straight up, I don't know how else to say that. No one has given us alternatives, George. Literally, literally, the mayor just stood up and said, I have a whole nother plan that I'd like to present in two weeks. So we do have potentially other alternatives. And I think it would, we would be remiss if, given the fact that we don't have an urban farming exception put in place, which, by the way, I went out to my buddy Jim's house, he has almost an acre, and I walked it off, and he still would not qualify for the 25% urban, urban farming discount. And that guy has multiple fruit trees, grapevines, and a large garden area, and he gives the, he gives that food away to the poor. And somehow, we are not going to, we're going to make him pay. Some months, some months, he's paying $200 more a month for his water if these proposed increases are put in place. I would ask you guys to please give the mayor a shot to see what we can do. I feel like we would be remiss. We do have options. We don't have this fully baked yet in certain ways, especially on the urban farming side. I can't understand how we would approve this tonight and feel like we did the right thing, given all of that information that came out today. I'll hold off on the rest of my comments. Thank you all. I, I guess most of all, I do want to say, thank you all for being here. And we just appreciate public engagement. And I say that when I'm here getting beat up too. So just wanted to let you guys know, I appreciate you showing up today.
Thank you, Councilor Hoben. Decorum, please. No, no applause. Thank you. Others?
We should have stayed with B City. I don't, I don't particularly like the, the inflationary environment we're in. When I hear about, I do have children who want to afford homes, and they're much more expensive. So we could talk about affordable housing. I'm on the energy board, and so I actually hear the costs that go into keeping our electricity going. It's astronomical. And I think we've got one of the best power units in the, in the state. It's remarkable how this is, how this is impacting all of us. So we talked about the water, you're right, we have listened to, I, I had no idea how expensive this is. So when Rachel shows the pipe, yep, they're really expensive. And yes, water can be cheap, but transporting it, ooh, there's the difference. So I don't imagine anyone's mind has been changed here tonight. Anyone feel like, oh, now I see it a different way. The reason I ran for city council is because I wanted to do my part in the city. I assure you, I have no grand ambitions, other than to, I just want to do my part. And I share the burden of doing what's right for the city. And sometimes that's going to help some people, sometimes it's not going to help some people. One of the things we haven't talked about is, why don't we have the rich pay for the water? Seriously. We could do water rates based on income levels. You know what I mean? I got to clap right there. So now, maybe you think that's a great idea. I don't. But there's a lot of ways we could do this. I have to express confidence, my confidence, in the way that we've gone about this. This is not an easy topic. No one likes the idea of this being hard on anyone. And you have to make decisions. We could kick the can, and I would agree, not making a decision, kicking the can doesn't make sense to me. So I, I'm willing to make the decisions. That's why I was voted in. Whether you like me or not, that's why I was voted in. And I will make, I will make the decision that I think is best for the city. That's, that's the responsibility I have. I personally would say, if the mayor thinks, and Gordon thinks they've got a, something that might help solve this, I want to hear that. And if it takes two weeks, I'm willing to wait two weeks. Now, we can't wait two years and 20 years, but that, I actually find some hope in that. Maybe there is something. And if not, then difficult decisions need to be made, and I'm willing to make it. Whether it's popular, whether you vote for me again, that's not my concern. I will do what I think is in the best interest of the city. And some of you are going to like that, and some of you are not. So my encouragement to the council would be, we have nothing to lose in two weeks. And if there is something that would be helpful, you'd be irresponsible not to hear it. So that's, that's my two cents. And I do appreciate the late hour, the fact that you're still sitting here, and that you're engaging in the, in the process. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Christensen. Councilor McKay?
I definitely want to wait the two weeks. And I completely acknowledge that we do need to do something, and that there is issues as far as our maintenance. And I don't believe in kicking the can down the road. And George should give a true figure in the fact that when we have to fix something in an emergency versus a planned fix, it's 60% more expensive. That's a big deal, right? I still am blown away that I missed the whole 5% thing. And I was like, what is going on? I'm fine with the, like, nominal, like, the 5% increase is fine to me. What's, what doesn't work for me is paying enormous differences per gallon. I, it has been a huge thing in our council, and I've been one of the bigger pushers of it as far as not subsidizing things. That's why BYU is so mad at me. But the, the, I don't see, the math doesn't make sense to me as far as the highest users being to blame for something when there's houses have been built after them. Like, it just doesn't work for me to make sense. It doesn't add up to me. And I know that they keep explaining it that way, but that doesn't make logic in my brain. So a moderate tier, that's great. I don't think when they're talking about five tiers, it means that we go from the 364 up. The big jump from 209 to 364 is enormous. Why don't we get two The big jump from 209 to 364 is enormous. Why don't we get two more tiers in between there? You know, like, it's the jumps that are so big that are, and why our tiers are, I am curious why ours is so much more expensive than Orem's. I was shocked when I saw the numbers of Orem's compared to ours. So that is, I know they make a ton more money than us in property taxes. I mean, that's half the issue, right? We're a city that's like 50%, 52%ish nonprofit, where we don't get property taxes from those people, which is why, one reason we do the transportation fee. So there's, you know, there's multiple factors going on. I don't think anyone hasn't been purposely transparent. Our administration, the, the workers, all the staff are incredible. And they're good, good people, and I believe that they all do their best. And, I mean, like, look at me not understanding the whole 5% thing, and I've been in freaking nine meetings. So I definitely don't like insinuating any, any non-transparent, like, I can't even think where, I'm so tired. Any, anyone being non-transparent or not clear. We do do a lot of meetings, you guys. I send out newsletters every council day. And I know Becky does too. Like, we try and communicate, our, like, our whole goal is to get everything out there and communicate with people. But it's really hard. Life is busy. And I get it that it's you not paying attention to all these nitty-gritty, because most of the stuff is boring you've sat through, right? There's little that's this interesting or relevant to your life on a daily basis. So know that we've pushed everything out on Instagram and Facebook and neighborhood meetings and individual newsletters. And so reach out to us. And this table over here, if you want to be on any of that communication, you're not getting it. But I do, I definitely support going the two weeks. I would vote no on this tonight. And, but I do recognize we need something, and I do want to vote yes on something for responsible maintenance.
Thank you, Counselor McKay. Counselor Bogdan?
I have to say I'm frustrated, and I don't understand. I feel like I'm thrown under the bus by the comments that were made tonight. I feel like this discussion could have happened with this earlier instead of right in a public meeting. We get these presentations from Public Works, and how I understand it, they fall underneath the mayor's office. And so what were presented to me is something that the mayor's office signs off on. And so when I get to a public meeting and I hear something like this, I feel thrown underneath the bus. I think these discussions can happen, and I think that they could happen earlier. And I think they should have. If there is a way to do this, I think that's great. But I think the one thing that haunts me is the different things that are in the paper, right? Last year, we had two. And we hired a consultant to come on, and he looked at all of our infrastructure, all of it. The pipes, the hauling tanks. We're paying this guy that's independent from city workers to tell us where these tiers need to be, what the law says, and how we need to abide by these industry standards. They even set the rates. We didn't set these ourselves. They set these, and they came to us and they said, okay, you're going to have another 5% increase. And they told us that if we didn't fix this, that the number of big breaks is going to happen more frequently. There's one that really haunts me is a guy on Sunday afternoon. I think it was May 10th of last year. He comes home from the airport, and the road starts giving way underneath him because the water broke. And there goes his car. Can you imagine that being your child on a bike? That haunts me. We're really lucky that this gentleman wasn't hurt. I just feel like that's irresponsible. And as far as Orem goes or the other cities go, I can't comment on why their rates are as low as they are. A lot of rates are underfunded. We know that. Cities do try to keep things low. I hope that if we wait for two more weeks, that that's the end of it, that we don't come back to another meeting and have the administration say, whoa, 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 whoa. We need to do this again, because I don't think that's fair to us. And I don't think that's fair to what we're doing. And yeah, I, I support the tiers. I mean, that's part of the law that we are doing. I've promoted out more rate calculators than not, so that it can be very transparent on what people's rates would be. The rate tier one and tier two, that jump to me is not that big because we already have a winter and a summer rate that already reflects that jump, right? The bigger jump is that $1.50 from tier two to three. And I acknowledge that those people will pay a lot more. But I am satisfied with the explanation of the two BYU professors and the one UVU professor and our consulting team, of the explanation of how how this works. And it's online everywhere. I've shared this everywhere as an example of, you know, because, I mean, these guys are experts in the field. It's not me. And the legislature did pass something that we need to meet, and we do need to meet those standards. That's how I feel about this. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Bogdan. And thanks again to all of you for your participation tonight, your interest, and for spending this time with us tonight. These are difficult issues and hard decisions that we have to make. We, we don't shy away from hard decisions. We passed one earlier this evening when we adjusted the transportation utility fee. That was a, a fee that needed to be adjusted as well. And I, I didn't hear any of our city leaders say not to raise the rates. They just, when I hear rates, I hear, when I, when they say rates, I hear revenue. And I hear them saying, we may have other ways we can address finding this revenue for the city. The, the tiers may need to be tweaked a bit. I've been encouraged by the farming, the urban farming exception. It looks like that needs to be studied more carefully as well. But but I know these are, are hard decisions that our council members are willing to study carefully and, and consider and take into account your input. I would like to make a substitute motion at this time that this item be continued. Not at a date specified, because if I say two weeks and we get information that we need to study, we might not be able to act on it in two weeks. So I would say just continued at a time to be determined, but consider the, the budget as a whole and information that will be presented to the council in a couple of weeks. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Hoben. Any council discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Counselor Christensen?
I, I would just encourage us, I, I think we have very little to lose by waiting a couple more weeks. Now, if it went longer than that, I think all of us would have an issue with that. I, I do give best of intentions for everyone who's involved in this. So I would, I would encourage us to, to take, to vote that.
Great, thank you. Counselor Hoben?
I just want to say sorry if I, how I, what I said and how I expressed things made anyone feel like I was saying that you didn't have good intentions. I, I don't really mean that. I just, I, so I don't truly mean that. And I, I don't want the public to think that our council doesn't have good intentions, or the city doesn't have good intentions. Even Keith, like, you have good intentions. I'm not, you know, even Keith, right? So I guess, I, I, I mean, in the moment, what I said, I said, and I, I, you know, the point, I still want to make that point, but like, the way I said it. So I just want to acknowledge that and apologize to George and others if they felt attacked, and, you know, Becky, if you felt, you know, thrown under the bus or whatever, that. I, I didn't really mean that in the way it came across. So I just, I want to acknowledge that. It's been said a few times, so I'm, I'm getting the point. I'm sorry, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Hoben. So we have a motion with a second by Counselor Hoben. I'll call for a vote. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
No.
Counselor Bogdan?
No.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
No.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
So this motion passes four votes to three. Thank you. We'll now, if there is no objection, we'll adjourn the Provo Municipal Council by unanimous consent. And thank you again to everyone, and good night.